Seven o'clock, we'll stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so before we start the regular select board meeting, we're having a meeting as the Board of Health, where the Town Manager, John Lulek, as the Health Officer, will present some findings on a property on Adams Street. The property owner was notified, they would have access to the hearing as well, to give their side of the story, as well as any neighboring properties could also give their evidence for the hearing. And then the Board will deliberate and make a decision on that, any potential order from the town upgraded. So, John, do you want to start, or Joe? John?
You want to read the whole notice of the tenant's order?
I don't think you need to, John, I think you can just talk a little bit about what you know.
Well, 10th and Adams Street, the properties are there, you want to search for the others. And there's all kinds of farm engineering, factories, vehicles, handbags, wagons, hay wagons, gearheads on it right now. Back porch is an awful full yard, and front house is a mess. And this started to develop, actually about a year and a half ago, trying to get this place cleaned up, with no progress being made. This is why we're at where we're at. And therefore, I will be seeking a health order at the November 2nd, 2021 meeting, of the period of board appointment acting as the local board itself at 17 minutes Fairhaven. Town Hall located five north fireplace period of law, unless such charges had been removed. Notice hereby given look to Lori Lawrence of high intent. And if Lori Lawrence requests a hearing to rebut my allegations, Lori Lawrence, so contact Town Manager at 802-265-3010, extend your file or write an email at fairhavencommander.com.net, in order to be placed on his agenda. There were proclases that are being taken out of there, I don't know where they went. And I think the hay baleers left, nothing else has moved.
What about all the dogs that are outside there, parking and?
Oh, that's another problem. The neighbor can tell you the test of that, so, yeah, it's a weird.
Okay. Anything else, John, that you, I'll come back for questions, I'll let everybody give their kind of opening thoughts, so then we can come back around. Anything else, John, from you?
No, just sorry.
How about Bill from the Police Department, do you have any background information? I know there have been tickets passed.
So I got the message to start looking at the junk ordinance, obviously, I sent them a notice, I believe in January of 2020, that we were going to start the process, I gave them a fair warning. And then I believe I started in May sending them violations, because they had made no actions, and then we were sending them weekly, right until this May, I think August is the last time I wrote a violation. They have paid, they took a lot of the tickets, they're $500 each, I think they paid $3,500, nine grand that we brought the tickets to. Doesn't ever seem to be a lot of compliance, we don't seem to gain any traction, like, other than, you can tell a little bit's been moved since I served the order on the sister home, Kathy Lawrence, but I served the order on behalf of the town. As far as the dogs, you know, patrol officers running at the worst times, and then trying to address the dog issues, as far as the registrations and parking issues. It seems, it is a constant, we don't really get any traction, I mean, you can write tickets and they are paying them, but they're not, they're paying half of them, there's no progress going on there. From what I've learned, it seems like half of the apartment wants to do something, but it's up against their tenant, which is family on the other side, so it seems to be a strike between the family.
Okay. As a joint property, or did you, not a joint, but a prop, nearby property?
Yeah, we're at 11 Adams Street, Clay Williams, my name, and we have, you know, a lot of concerns just because of all the garbage. The garbage is there, the vehicle, I mean, there are several vehicles there. I don't know that they're licensed or anything, I don't know, I guess you could tell that more than I could. I wonder, you know, even if the vehicles that are running there are licensed or inspected, I don't know. Your ordinance says that that's, you know, they're in violation right there, because they're not allowed to have all them junk vehicles there. There's, has been a couple tractors leave, but there's still probably three or four there. Farm tractors, and then there's several lawn mowers, lawn tractors, put it that way.
And trucks.
And trucks, and a couple campers that are full of garbage. Porches full of garbage, holes in the house that we've watched birds fly in and out of. One of the neighbors actually told me just the other day that there was a dead rat in the middle of the road, a big rat. So, the garbage and everything, I think, is probably starting to bring in the rats and everything, which I, you know, I'm really concerned over that. The yelling and the screaming and the language, it's just terrible. I mean, I live two doors up across the street, and I can sit in my garage and listen to them screaming and yelling and profanities, just, you know. We have our granddaddy's over for the weekend, I don't want them hearing that, you know. They like to go for walks, I don't want to walk down that hill. You know, not with the dogs barking at them and everything else, not when the dogs are chained up, I will give them that. They're not loose or anything, but they just constantly bark. I mean, it's all day long, they bark. They do take them in at night, so we don't listen to it at night. But just great concerns with the garbage and all that down there, the health hazard. And parking on the street all the time, there's always, you know, two, three, four cars parked on the street. Speeding up and down the street, they get to fighting down there, and yelling and screaming, the next thing, you know, they're speeding up and down the street. So it's, it's just constant, and, you know. We moved here five years ago, and we had saw pictures of all the neighbors on the internet and everything, and it looked like a pretty nice, you know, neighborhood and everything. Well, little did we know that that changed over time, to the pictures, pictures on Google. So, we'd just like to see it, you know, cleaned up, and maybe get them a little bit more control themselves, and get that garbage out of there, the junk vehicles out of there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Just for the record, the property owner has not an attendance for the meeting, so they are not. And they were properly served and warned of the meeting. Questions from Board members? Glenn?
One for John, I read in the health order about the infestation with the rats, and the need for getting exterminator, has anything happened, or?
Not to my knowledge.
Other questions? Rob?
Is this, I see a picture here, I can't really tell what I'm looking at, it looks like a trailer corner, a corner of a travel trailer, is, am I looking at a garbage dump?
Behind it.
Behind it? That's, that's garbage, and?
That, yeah, that picture came out funny, that's a garbage dump, and if, when you're on site, it looks as though they were, they were burning their household waste behind the building there. You can see the brown, kind of crusty leaves up top, and then the melted plastic underneath. It's, yeah, it looks like that's where we were burning it.
Is that a, kind of a brook underneath these branches, behind the branches, or is that just a bank?
I think it's a, it's a steep bank right there.
It goes up and then goes back to the post office.
Oh, okay, okay.
When were these pictures taken?
Some of them last week, some of them, you know, three weeks ago.
This is kind of a before picture, though, right?
That's, that's the before picture, that was 2012.
That must be the one, at least.
That's probably, yeah.
Oh, yeah, says it right there. Bottom line?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, any other questions for Board members?
Chris?
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
On the, I click the fourth page of the packet, under the order, under conclusion and order number four, the name is wrong, I think.
Yes.
Yep. Should be Lawrence?
It should be Lawrence.
Yep.
Okay, other questions? No? Okay. So with no other questions, we do have a health order from Mr. Lulek, with that title, we'll change, change that in there, but John, what are you looking for, for action, from the Board of Health?
I'd like to see one through seven.
See, the order as you presented it to the, to the Board?
And also, there's a statement for procedural rights attached to it.
Yep. Okay. So do we close the hearing and then take action, or how do you?
Should we read the order?
The one, one through seven, so that, and books are now, don't work.
Do you want to, do you want to read the order as John's presented it?
I'm asking you. I'll, John, if it's okay, I'll read the, the health order. So the order that the Board of Health is going to consider is, and I'll read the whole thing. Therefore, by the authority granted, as applicable in 18 VSA subsection 126, 602A, the Board is considering ordering Ms. Lawrence that the rat, cat, and other vermin found on the premises be exterminated by a professional, that the extermination be conducted in such a way as to prevent vermin from migrating to surrounding homes and properties. The order that Ms. Lawrence remove all tall grass, debris, equipment, tires, and brush on the property that is contributing to the vermin problem. That Ms. Lawrence remove all debris and household trash from the interior of the building at 1012 Adams, as it is contributing to the health hazard. That Ms. Lawrence show proof of extermination to the Board of Health, that all orders be carried out prior to November 30th, 2021, and that this order shall remain in force until terminated by the Fairhaven Board of Health. So signed by Mr. John Lulek, Fairhaven Health Inspector.
Okay.
What are the consequences if nothing is done?
So if, if they choose to go past the November 30th date, then this gets moved up to the, to the state courts. And currently, we do have, it's kind of a two-pronged attempt, we've, we've tried to gain compliance since 2018. As the chief said, there's several thousand dollars of tickets on the, under the junk ordinance. And those tickets that have not been paid, there's currently a lien on the property, which we're working to foreclose. Right now, we're working on that process, which is not something we want to do, we want to work with the neighbors, so, or with the homeowner. So, but yeah, it's heading to a court, if nothing's done.
Okay.
So are you looking for a motion from us to?
I think we're looking for a motion to enforce the order as presented by Fairhaven Health Inspector.
I'll make a motion that we enforce the, the seven orders that were just covered here by our Fairhaven Health Inspector.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Glenn, that was seconded by Rod, questions on that motion? Procedurally, how does this work? Does John send that to them, is it served by the Police Department, what's the?
We'll serve this to the, we'll serve them through the Police Department, just so they, we make sure they get it. And then they'll have 30 days to, or, I'm sorry, until the 30th to comply.
Should our motion also state, should we authorize John to sign any, any orders on behalf of the Board? The Board?
It might help speed things along, if things do progress and they do start coming into compliance.
Just maybe add that.
Let me, let me amend the motion, then, I'll, I'll make a motion that we move forward with the, with the seven orders made by John Lulek, our Fairhaven Health Inspector, and also have John have the ability to sign any subsequent health-related documents.
Yep, you're fine with that, second? For the 1112?
Okay, for, for?
For this particular?
Like, seconded as a, seconded and passed, change.
Questions on the motion? No? All right, seeing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the motion carries. Anything else, John, you need from the Board of Health, or are you, you're all set?
The hope that somehow, rather than get this thing done.
All right, and thank you, thank you for coming in, so.
You think people got to realize, they're living in the village now, they're not out in the country.
Yep. All right, so with that, we'll adjourn the Board of Health meeting at 7:15, and call the regular select board meeting to order at 7:15. Amendments to the agenda, any amendments needed?
Would like to add an executive session for real estate purchase or lease under 1VSA 313A2.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Glenn, seconded by Rod, to add real estate discussion under executive session, any other changes needed? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, approval of the minutes from October 19th?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of October 19th, as written?
Second.
A motion by Glenn, seconded by Rod, to approve the minutes from October 19th. Any corrections needed? Jeff, are you all set?
All set.
Okay, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, five minutes for public comment? Nobody? There's nobody online, Joe, besides Jeff?
Looks like RSVP is online, but I think they're here for another discussion.
Gotcha. Department head reports, Bill, do you want to go?
The last two weeks have been relatively steady, we've had, we had two intoxicated persons that were in cap, we have one for, roughly retail setup, and one for driving without a license. Halloween started out rainy, the sun came out, right at the best time, and we had quite a few people on the street. Not a normal year, but much like in 2020, we had no problems. We got a lot of compliments for us being out, and a lot of people thanking, but it was good, the turnout was awesome. We, we hired Craig Rogers as a part-time officer to fill Chris DeVito's leave, he's absent until, he's on until April. Craig lives in the area, he's a Level 2 E, which you're hard to change. He was working in St. Johnsbury, he wanted to come back into the area, met a process, and with Chris leaving, I went to the boss to get a background, so he just started. Down for the recurring recording system, we did a four-hour test the other day with no, no issue, as I told you before. When we switched, everybody switched on one day, the guy that made it starts up to the governor's office, where the media was calling the governor out on the, the problem, so we're back to our old system. We did a four-hour test the other day, it seemed to be okay, and then we're back again on the old one. So I don't know when that permanent switch is going to go. The lights showed up for the Explorer today, but they, because of the fire, the tech was at the fire, wasn't able to come and put the, start the process again, that, on finalized. We have had rash car breaks in the area, we have identified a suspect. It's just a matter of trying to put it together, we've had quite a few. That's why I put out a reminder, everybody lock your doors, and it's not happening just at 3:00 in the morning, it's 6:00 in the afternoon, and motive of opportunity. Again, we do have a suspect, it's just a matter of tying that person to each one. But I think that's all I have, basics, if you guys had anything you can think of. Oh, we started doing road construction again today, $75 an hour for Lydell Brothers, out on Route 4. They're, they're putting new signs in, they approached us about working, I talked to Joe, we can cover it right now, I said if we can't cover it, I'll have to go somewhere else, but it should be this weekend next. I don't know exactly what they're doing, but they're, they're signs, sign replacements, they're just digging holes out to get it on the board. So we're charging them $75 an hour, and anything over eight hours is $112 hours an hour. I have part-timers working it, so there should be some back in the, to offset the expense, a little extra larger amount, that's offset, revenue back to the, I think that's all I have.
Questions for Sleep Chief? Okay, thanks, Bill. Aaron?
Yes.
Oh, so DPW, they, they were waiting for the state bid for the, the road salt to come out, and they did order with the lowest bidder. I don't have those numbers, but I'll get them for the, for the Board at the next meeting, I don't have what it was per ton. Manholes, if you bend down North Main, they have paved a portion of North Main to help with some home shaking. The DPW is continuing to do kind of leaf cleanup, to make sure the storm drains are open when, when wintertime does hit, so you'll see the sweeper out there, they're still going.
Excuse me, have you touched base with the homeowner, and has he given his opinion?
I have, I called the homeowner several times, I called him on Monday last week to let him know when we were coming. I called him again during the construction, and then I called him again, and I've left messages, I get the, I get the message, the machine. And I called him again when the project was completed, and left messages every time, I haven't received a response.
And, and why didn't we do the third manhole?
So the?
Or at least touch up the third manhole?
The, so the, the real complaint was, I thought, around the first manhole, but he had also said something about the second, so we did those two. That third manhole is a dead-end manhole, and we didn't want to, we didn't want to pave over it, because we're going to have to flush. It's, if we can't get into that, then we're bound to have more trouble. So, I wanted to see if this fixed this problem before we tossed more money at that project. If it doesn't, if this doesn't fix this project, we will, of course, move forward and then pave that area as well.
Okay, because that's, that's the only, because it was always talked that, that it was a three-manhole set, so it, it's, it's hard to determine if the work that you did, let's just say, the complaint is still there. Is it the work that you did, or the work that you didn't do yet? So you can't, this, you can't, it's hard to discount the, the work that you did, until you, you do all three manholes, because the complaint was three manholes.
The, okay.
You know, you know what I'm saying, it's, it's always been a three-manhole set, in all the conversations I've been involved in. So, I understand what you're saying about the, the flushing and stuff, but hopefully, it's going to, he's going to call back and say, boy, I am ecstatic about this.
I'm hoping.
And then? All right.
DPW has, they've finished up the MRGP Grants and Aid Program, that's where they were out ditching and working on some of the storm drains. We did get reimbursed, I'm sorry, we were approved for that 80% reimbursement, so we're going to get some money back from the state on that one. The recreation, rec and cemetery water lines, and the rec bathroom, and bathroom at the airport have all been winterized. And I let the school know that that was, that was being done, because they do use that until the last minute. And they're going to be working on some ditching, just to, to, as wintertime comes, they're going to need some space to push that snow and let the melt run off. So, they're going to be doing some ditching before real winter weather sets in. And I think you've seen the sewer, I, I think sewer flushing starts next week. No, no, it started today, yeah. Yep. And the guys, they've, we've done, we've done a lot of training lately, which I'm, I'm, I'm real happy to hear. They did another snow and ice control training last week, it was an online program. For the Water Department, we had both, both of our storage tanks inspected by the, by the robot. We do have a report, it came in today, and we're going to be reviewing that, and taking recommendations. So at the Water Department, we have a new operator, he came on a few months ago, along with an intern, both of those folks have taken their Class 4B water operator, taken the class for 4B water operator, and they'll be taking the test this week. And for the water line across Adams Street Bridge, A&amp;E's started helping us, and they developed an RFP for that project, a leaky water line that runs across the top. And we're going to release that RFP, hopefully, early next week, and have some numbers back to the Board on the 16th, to see what that looks like for the repair. Sewer, the plant upgrade is still going pretty good, issues, same issues we had last time we updated. Equipment is tough to come across, contractor equipment. The subcontractors are short-staffed, like everybody else apparently now, and it's making it hard to move things in and out. Still waiting on that Adams Street, Adams Street backup generator for the pump station. And like Water Department, the Sewer Department also attended a fall training that was put on by Green Mountain Water Environmental Association. And that's what I have for Aaron.
Okay, questions for DPW? Jeff, any questions, DPW?
Nothing until budget.
Okay. All right, Town Manager report?
A little bit of communication from VTранs. We reached out to talk about adding a flashing yellow over 4A and South Main there. I also asked about just a regular, you know, traffic light, red light. Their response was, the flashing yellow was a possibility, but they recommended other, other things instead, like improved, improved signage, making sure the brushes cut back further for line of sight, and more street-level improvements, as opposed to putting up a light. The red light, the, the actual traffic light, based on the rules that they use to decide where traffic lights go, and I'm dumbing this down, because I don't know what the manual is called, but they said absolutely not. They said it won't fit any criteria to put a red light there, so.
What intersection is this?
Downtown and bottom of the hill.
This is right where the Route 4, you come on by the railroad tracks, top of the hill, cars to come out.
Prospect and?
Are they talking about that yellow light that, that flashes electronically, you can tell if there's a car coming, or just a flashing?
Similar to the brown corners?
Yeah.
They suggested that, something more street-level, as opposed to something hanging.
That's what it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They, they suggested that, so we can look into some numbers on that. So that was communications. Town man, a little bit from the Town Manager's office, we talked about trainings. I've started some trainings with the ICMA, they have a good coaching program that I've started working with, I've started working with them, and I've signed?
What's ICMA?
International City, County, and County Managers Association. They also have a credentialing program, you have to have, you know, so many years of experience and education to, you know, qualify to sign up. So I did sign up for that, which is exciting, something I've been working towards. We did register for the National Opioid Settlement, for all that big money that's coming in, in '22. The playground equipment behind the school did sustain some additional damage. Looks like, it looks like somebody tried to melt the stairs going up to the slide, there's a big hole in it now. Yeah, so they cordoned off more of that. Yeah, so they cordoned off more of that, uh, and I was supposed to get quotes. I reached out to the vendor for our new playground equipment, and I was supposed to get quotes yesterday, and that never showed up. So I'm gonna have to reach out again. Payroll analysis, the board asked for payroll analysis. Two months ago, maybe. I waited on that because I was, I was trying to get through an ex, through a first full quarter of this fiscal year. I guess overall, we did see, uh, we did see a jump in pay, uh, just to go into it briefly. It was in the, I think I sent it in packets in an email. Um, we did see a jump in pay, um, but not so, it, it wasn't as significant as, as, it's what we would expect, it's what I would expect. Minimum wage did, did go up between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-one, which was the period that I analyzed. I think it was up, what, ten, ten percent more than, almost eleven percent. And then we did have some, some staff that, that did get raises. The accountant got a raise. And the municipal assistant got a raise as well at that time, so. Yeah, it was up, and it's, it's kind of what we would expect to see. The Clark property, this is something we've been working on for about nine months, uh, twelve South Main. That does go up for sale on November ninth at ten AM. Um, I need to, I stress this in the ad, and I need to stress it to, to folks that would watch, that are watching and wish to come and bid. This is not a tax sale. This process is through the probate court, which i- it falls under different rules, um, than what a tax sale would be. So this is outside of our tax, our town, town process. Still going. Bid, uh, this was disappointing. Uh, bids came back for, for the salt shed. Uh, the low bid came in at five hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. This is about double what we have, uh, from grants to pay for this, this project.
What were you expecting?
I was expecting something in the mid twos to threes. Even with the fifty percent increase in the TARP system that I talked to the, um, the contractor about, uh, last month, this number is still.
Is it mostly in materials, or?
It was mostly materials. Yeah. The, our engineer is analyzing the, uh, the bids right now. We're gonna, we're, we're gonna have to reject, unless the board wants to front this money. We're gonna have to reject all bids, and then dig deep into where, where the money came from, kind of more an aggregate level, like, what did cement blocks cost, what did the piping cost, what did this, you know, get more detail than just their overall.
How many bids did we get?
Uh, we got only two bids. Four, four contractors came out to look at the project, um, only two bid. Uh, the next, well, the highest bid was five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine seven nine, so they were close within five thousand bucks, yeah. I reached out to the state to see what, you know, I've never had this happen. So I reached out to the state to see what they suggested. They said, do what we're doing, analyze the bids, see where we can maybe scale back, uh, or maybe the, maybe our specs were off. A- and then we are going to, uh, either go out to bid for spring construction again, or hold off and see if construction costs come down. We have, we have at least a year to be able to rebid it.
And it's not uncommon, a lot of projects are coming in twice the cost.
It's, I know our-
It's uncertainty in manpower and, uh, products being available.
Sure. And if I could take just a, I know I've taken a lot of your time, just, uh, I missed my, every quarter I like to just update the board on where we are with our finances, broadly. Uh, right now, we should be sitting, as of today, we should be sitting at about thirty-four, thirty-five percent spent down out of our budget. Uh, the general fund is sitting at thirty-one percent spent. Public Works is sitting at only twenty-two percent spent. Uh, Water Fund is at thirty-one percent spent, and, uh, wastewater is at twenty-nine percent. So we're, we're looking healthy for right now. And that's all I have.
Questions for town manager? All right, thanks, Joe. Uh, no old business? What's that acronym stand for, girl?
Polkney Meadowee.
Oh, there she is, Hillary, stands for Hillary. Polkney Meadowee.
I've tried before, it's on here, but if you just want to introduce yourself, we'll just go from there. Wherever, wherever you feel comfortable.
Oh, okay, so I'm Hillary Solomon with the Polkney Meadowee Natural Resources and Conservation District, my office is in Polkney. And we cover the Polkney and Meadowee watersheds, um, do natural resources work, work with farmers, work with landowners, work with towns, try to identify water quality issues, and then help find ways to remediate them and find funds to pay for that remediation. So we've been involved with a stormwater master plan, which is kind of the states, the way that they've structured, um, recent assessments for related stormwater and, um, doing sort of green stormwater infrastructure type, type projects, so infiltrating stormwater before it hits the storm drain, so it's a little cleaner. Great.
Hillary will be talking about this slide and one other.
Wonderful. Um, and I have some maps to pass out as well.
Oh, thank goodness.
Couple of them, I don't think I have enough for everybody. So these are the projects that were identified in Fairhaven. They might be stormwater projects, that was our focus. Occasionally, there's an erosion project, or occasionally, uh, roads related project, um, especially if we thought it looked like something that you might be dealing with anyhow through the MRGP, and it'd be helpful to have it listed in a document that had funds for it. Uh, but most of the projects in Fairhaven were stormwater related. We went through and we applied, um, the collective data, and then applied, uh, state prioritization matrix. And so we compared, we felt, we, we looked at, um, multiple towns, and so we compared each of the projects in the towns to each other according to this matrix, and we had, uh, four or five projects in Fairhaven that ranked as, as high quality projects that would be great to implement if the town was interested. And so those are these, um, problem summary sheets here. I'm just gonna keep one in case you guys have questions, so I can look into. There's a couple hard copies, and I, um, I'm guessing we'll get them tomorrow, in the evening. So there are a number of sites, um, around the town green. And if you look at page two, there's the FHV, Fairhaven, um, site six, which is collecting, um, and the, okay, the map also, if you look at the map, those red outlines are the outlines of the areas that drain to these project locations. So some of them have fairly large red, like watersheds for these, um, project locations. So that would be where the water being treated is coming from in these projects. So, for example, one of the ones we were looking at would have a treatment area right across the road, right here, in the kind of pointy edge of the park, and it would be treated underground, so you wouldn't be able to see what was happening. It would be like, uh, an underground sort of little treatment unit. So those are the types of, uh, there were a couple around the park, because that's, the water already drains toward the park in most places, and then it's really easy to treat it along the margins where there isn't as much use, um, because it's sort of right in front of the parked car areas. And I know you guys have been working with the Boys and King, but our spots didn't overlap those, so I thought that worked out nicely. Joe had told us about that study as well, so that was helpful. So I'm not coming with any sort of formal proposal to implement a project, I'm just letting you know what we found. And that these projects that are in this packet, you know, we would be excited if the town was interested in implementing them. And, um, there'll be conceptual designs for some of these, because they, these actually ranked as the highest in the whole watershed. So the ones around the green got really good scores. So they'll be conceptual designs, which means you'll actually be able to look at what I'm talking, you know, what type of practice is sort of recommended, and what does a sketch of it look like, so that might be decision making easier. And then, so that's the first thing I'm here to talk to you about, and the second thing is related. So I don't know if we want to stop and just-
Yeah, is there questions on, on these?
If, if we were to decide to do a project, what's, what's the timing? Because like, I think of down by the park and all the work we want to do with the new parking ride and changing the traffic and everything. Would not want to, and that's probably two to three years out. I wouldn't, wouldn't want to have this, that's four years out, and we tear up everything we just put into going. So, so I mean, what's the timing that we're talking?
We don't have any preset timeline, um, so I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about funding that's gonna be available for Fairhaven, and how we hope you'll participate in actually making some decisions about that funding in a second. But, um, we don't, we just want to, we would want to install those projects after you're done making any changes, or have your changes incorporate the projects, if that is the easier way to do it.
Other questions? Okay.
Do you have money and funding, you have grants to help us do this?
Yes.
I, I'm always trying to, and you, and you probably have a new pitch, but I'm saying, if we are gonna take a project on, you get some grants, you get, what roughly is the exposure to the town? Can a town, are we looking at having, needing to put up a hundred thousand dollars to match some other thing? Twenty-five thousand, there's a, a, what's, what's the ballpark? I wouldn't hold you to it, but-
So right now, there isn't even any match for these projects. The state has an unprecedented amount of funding for clean water work right now. And they are worried they won't be able to spend it all. So they don't want to-
Come on, free money, come on down.
In fact, so the next thing I'm gonna talk to you guys about is the clean water service provider. Have you heard, this sounds familiar, this sounds familiar? Okay, so a couple of years ago, Act Seventy-Six passed in the legislature, and what was decided was that the Department of Environmental Conservation up at the state was not able to get their clean water funds out the door fast enough. They were too, it's just, they're understaffed. Um, and so the idea was to get that funding out to more regional areas. Um, and so there will be quite a bit of funding coming to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and the Polkney Meadowee Conservation District will be working together. We are putting together a group, uh, that's gonna include representatives from local towns, and we're really hoping that Joe would like to be on this com- committee.
I'd love to be in our committee.
We're kind of focused on towns and uptown managers, because I think that just means they'll have more capacity to participate. And there'll be some kind of compensation for the time of the person who serves on this committee. But the idea is that, so it's probably gonna be around six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year coming through the Polkney Meadowee Watersheds and South Lake Direct, which is the western side of Orwell, um, all the way up to Pant, through Pantin, up to Charlotte. So the, the area in Addison County that drains directly to the lake, not through Otter Creek, and then the Polkney Meadowee Watersheds. So we'll put together a committee that has two municipal representatives, two representatives from conservation districts, two representatives from RBCs, um, two watershed groups, which we don't have by definition in our area, so we're gonna have to figure that out. And then a land conservation, like Vermont Land Trust representative. So that committee will come together, look at projects like these ones, try to choose the ones that make the most sense to implement, and then, like, you know, find people to implement them. And the type of projects that are eligible include floodplain, stream restoration, um, river corridor easements, recurring buffer restorations, lakeshore lines, road BMPs, forest BMPs, and then just your traditional, um, stormwater projects. We aren't sure if roads projects, if what type, it's all non-regulatory. So if something falls under the MRGP already for roads, it won't be, you won't be able to use funds for, for those projects. But if you have state, you have a private road that's really causing a big problem, and dumping water and debris onto a public road, that might be eligible. So the guidance is being developed right now. Um, we're supposed to have people picked for this basing council by the end of the year, and then the first funds would be in twenty twenty-three.
And you mentioned, uh, working with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission? And they're pushing the river corridor thing? Now, did you get, are they giving preferential treatment to towns that have their river corridor plans already in place? Because we, we don't, the reason I ask, we don't have one.
Well-
And we would, I would want to start working on if, if it, if it puts you in a better position to get funding?
So that's a, that's an amazing question, actually. The majority of funding through our formula, the way they figured it out, because of the rural land use in this watershed, is for stream corridor work, or stream bank erosion, or floodplain reconnection. So that caused me to panic, because as you mentioned, you know, we don't have corridor plans for most of our towns. Our stream work assessment work is old. So, um, I did write a grant to try and go back to those old assessments, because you do have an assessment for the Castleton River. Go back to those, bring in the contractor who did that original work, have them, like, delineate projects, because they're very basic right now. They just say, that's, this area of stream needs more trees, or this area of stream needs this, and it doesn't identify exactly where. So that's something, I, I haven't heard if we get, receive that grant, but if I do, it sounds like I'll come let you guys know, and we can work on this together, um, they would be interested. So, yeah, I did a project prioritization grant for the Lake St. Catherine watershed, because we just finished that stormwater master plan. This one's still in progress, so we're sort of still identifying projects. And then I did that project, um, development grant for the streams, and so we'll see if we get those two grants. And I don't know how to, um, so I don't know, Joe, if you'd be interested in serving on a committee like that. And if so, we'd be open to talking about, like, what type of compensation would be helpful for us to pay the town for your time, and figuring out what, from you, how many hours you think it would take, like, we can get you a better description of what the activities would be. And you can let us know what that would, like, the value of that time.
Sure, um, I would like to be on the committee. Can we talk, you know, tomorrow morning then?
He would say that.
Yeah.
Top off.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I'm in the office tomorrow all day, I have a board meeting in the afternoon, but I'm, so I'm more available in the morning, but. And then Friday, I'm available too.
Good tomorrow morning?
Yeah, tomorrow morning would be good. I'm freaked out, I'm, I, I always kind of panic before board meetings, but, um, I'm not sure why, it's probably, I don't know what you do, but we're select board meetings.
Every time, never. All right, questions?
So if there were private landowners that resided along the Polkney River, and they had erosion issues, would they contact Joe? Or contact?
Or me.
Or you?
Either one, it's not, we're gonna have to just keep a list at this point, I think, and we're gonna, what we're gonna do is, as a group, is figure out how to keep that list. We're gonna try and have a website where it's interactive, and like, you could go in, or the landowners could go in and put information in that we can see. Or some easy way for people to let us know that they have issues. Forest lands are covered too, so forest road improvements would be covered also. And that's a big, that's a biggie. We, we've done a tiny bit of that as a district, and I know the state has done a tiny bit, and NRCS has done a tiny bit of forest road improvements, but the, this watershed has one of the highest reductions from forest lands for phosphorus. It's forty percent reduction from the current amounts that they are modeling, this kind of forested lands. Most of the rest of the state, or the Lake St. Catherine watershed's five percent reduction. So they are gonna be looking at focusing on forests, um, forested lands. So we'll have to figure out how to get information out to homeowners, and, you know, if we set up our own grant program for them, or how we decide that a project would kind of rise, rise to the top. It's gonna be challenging.
John, do you have a question?
Yeah, she mentioned the Castle River project. Has that been done through the county area? To where Castle River area, Sex and the Point River?
Yeah, yeah, so, um, it was years ago, now it was, I was trying to remember when that happened. It was two thousand and six or seven, I think.
Yeah.
Um, do you, I don't know if you guys even remembers, Kristen Underwood worked on that, and we, she walked the whole river and took a bunch of measurements, and there was a dam removal study that I know the town wasn't interested in, and there was a little bit of outreach to landowners along the river about some projects.
Damn, eliminated itself in Ira with Irene.
Okay.
But my property borders the Castle River.
Okay.
And I do have some river walking problems.
Okay, yeah, I can come and visit and check it out, case and details.
Let Joe know when you're coming, Joe, let me know.
Okay, all right, yeah, I'll get, so you have, you can connect us, right? Yeah, that's perfect, that's exactly what we need, is just to get a handle on. And then especially because I think we're gonna have trouble spending the funds, so we're gonna be really excited when people do have our projects.
So is your ask to us to look at these projects and possibly prioritize what we may or may not want to do? Or I, I'm, I'm trying to, what do you need from us?
Um, I would say, look at them, and if anything, one of them's up the Fairhaven Inn, so that'll be kind of outside your purview. But for the one- But for the ones on town property, if there's any red flags or anything that we should know, like, for example, it sounds like you're redoing traffic.
Traffic flows.
We're, we're gonna be doing some pretty good infrastructure in, in the main part of town down here.
Do you have other, like, plans? Is that the DeBois and King? Okay, so we do have that, so hopefully what we've done will mesh with that, but I'll double check on that.
I'll get your final plans too. They're, they're drafting.
I'm sure you got the final one.
Okay, great. So, oh, so I think it would be if there was any red flag aside from the DeBois and King, um, work, to let me know. Otherwise, these will probably get conceptual designs. They'll be really basic though, you know, they aren't gonna be expensive designs. They'll just be a quick, something quick. So, we can kind of picture what we're talking about and then we can integrate it in either during or after your work. So, I think that's it. It's just if you don't want, if you, if something strikes you, it's not, it's not gonna work and it would never work, let us know because we wouldn't waste the time on the conceptual design.
Uh, I think, just personally, I think it's great to work around the park where we're doing existing, um, infrastructure work.
Well, that has a lot of potential.
Great, that's great to hear.
Um, other feedback? Joe?
I have, I have a very specific question and then, I guess they're both specific. Um, for FHV twelve. It's the, yes, the purple box on the map, on the.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Um, that homeowner has, has reached out and said he had concern about erosion on the, on the back of his property.
Well, that's from the map. You're looking at the map now?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm looking at the map.
My glasses on, so I can only see up close, um, but I know what you're talking about.
That's Restmucence property.
Yeah, Mr. Restmucence property that you've been having trouble with drinking?
Yeah, well, there's an outfall there and he was concerned about erosion. Is that because it's called out here? Is that, is that a potential project?
It is, and that one's identified by the state in one of those storm, we actually got that one from the state.
Okay.
It was in one of those stormwater infrastructure assessments. So, what they had, they look at all the outfalls and they decided that one needed help work.
Okay.
So, you could, if like, if you wanted that one, um, bumped up because you wanna do that one, that would be good to know too, cause we could probably, especially if the grain wasn't gonna go.
Yeah, well, he, he had concern. It, it bubbled up to my office, but I, I had just assumed that it was, you or the state had been out there and had kind of identified it already.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, we, I think we should probably talk.
Okay, that sounds good. Sounds like we'll talk tomorrow.
Yeah, and then one more specific question. Um, it's about, uh, bank erosion. I was, a young lady reached out to me just last week. Uh, she had, uh, an old slate wall. That the river had, yeah, kinda eaten away the, the bank behind it and now the slate wall is, is mostly in the river. Seventy thousand dollar project to put that slate wall back. Um, would this grant rebuild a slate retaining wall?
I don't know, but I can ask, um, I don't know, the state really likes the stream to be able to do what the stream wants to do and so they're not funding any kind of.
Retaining.
Riprap retaining laws. Is that in town, like down in this?
It is, it's.
But I'll, I'll make a call about it.
If, I would appreciate it. It's, uh, I looked myself for some grant funding for the, for the young lady and it's, because it's private land, there's really nothing out there for the, for.
It's almost a historical, like it's giving a historical, like Vermont Department of Conservation or something.
True. Thank you.
But I can call them too. I'll call them and the stream folks.
Okay, other questions or ideas?
Good stuff, though. I mean, I'm excited.
Well, that's good. I haven't met with you guys, ladies, in so long and then, um, COVID started right when we started this study, so I had plans to come and let you know what we were doing. And I ended up just meeting with Joe.
Well, Joe would be happy to help.
Yeah, anything we can do.
Okay, that sounds great. I, I was like, um, I'll say yes.
You want?
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, municipal resolution? Joe, do you wanna go through that one?
Sure. Uh, speaking of Ed Bove, um, Rutland Regional, uh, has volunteered to, to help us with a grant to get a, to, to receive, they're going to write and submit a grant on the town's behalf, to update our, to help us update our zoning regulations. Um, and that's what this is. We had to approve the fiscal year twenty-two municipal resolution, uh, in order to get those grant, that grant funding. The match for that is, it, it won't exceed three thousand dollars.
We need to provide ten percent grant match of the three thousand dollars, so it's ten percent of three thousand or we could be taking three thousand dollars and committing it.
So, you're, you're committing the three thousand dollars to the, to the project. It's ten percent, so it's, it could go up to what, thirty thousand dollars for the project.
It could be up to thirty thousand.
Depending on how deep they go into what our, what our project looks like.
Do we have it in our grant match fund that we have set aside?
We do.
We, we have it?
Yes.
Okay. Always important to have the money.
Yeah, before you spend it.
Yeah, good.
And this resolution, if the board does adopt it, is signed by Chris Cole.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve their resolution and the funding?
Well, have, have we talked to the, the, uh, the zoning board?
The zoning board?
Yes.
And they agree that we need help?
Yes, they've, uh, they've, they've reached out to me if, almost when I got here and asked for a little bit of help, which is not my specialty. Um, Dave Amy, the chair of that board, actually signed this piece of paper saying, yes, please, we appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve not to exceed three thousand dollars of grant fund match for the zoning updates.
Okay, second. Uh, motion by Glenn, second by Carol. Um, discussion? Jeff, any discussion?
Sounds good as long as zoning is on board.
Yep, Dave has it signed here. Okay, um, no other questions, so all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
I didn't wanna presume that we were.
All right, um, petition signatures for appropriation request?
That's me.
That's sealed.
And, and Marissa and Joanne Riley.
Yeah, online.
Yeah, and then the RSVP is also online.
So, just to set up, there was some, hey, there was questions last year with COVID. We changed things around a little bit and I think the discussion was how was the town attorney ever gonna approach it this year? So, we were looking for feedback. I know Glenn has some ideas that he shared with me that might work, so we're looking to get folks an answer so that if you need to get signatures, you have appropriate time to do that, so.
I just wanted to mention that the, I represent, I'm Joanne Riley. I represent the Castle Community Seniors. And, um, the Castle Community Seniors receives appropriations from our three major towns that we serve, Castleton, Fairhaven and Houberton. And, um, with Houberton, it's a voice vote, so it's not a matter of, we collect signatures. Two or three years ago, the town of Castleton decided to put in a policy that if you were approved the previous year and you're not asking for increased funds, you do not have to get the signatures. That made immense difference for us. It was wonderful. We usually have to get about a dozen people going out into the community to get signatures. And, uh, it was, I'm really grateful that you didn't do it last year because we had so few people at the community center when we were closed. It would have been, and it wouldn't have been safe. You know, having people go door to door trying to get signatures. So, back in two thousand fifteen, I actually wrote to the Fairhaven Select Board at that time and asked them to consider doing that. They said, no, not at that time. Uh, but I'm hoping that maybe this year with COVID, you found that it's something that maybe you could consider. Maybe using the same policy that Castleton is using if your amount was approved in the previous year. Or even say two years if you want, but if your amount was approved and you're not asking for an increased amount, you don't have to get the signatures. A good example of the kind of support, I, I took last year's vote count. The total number of votes in Fairhaven was eight hundred and thirty-two and six hundred and seventy-seven approved the appropriation. I mean, that's really a mandate, you know, that I think the services that are provided by that organization are ones that the, the community supports. So, to go out and get a hundred signatures and then get six hundred and seventy-seven people saying yes, seems a little bit redundant, but I understand, you know, your concerns about just opening it up so that you'd have, you know, dozens of people asking for appropriations. And I think that that could be controlled with some of those guidelines that I mentioned that are in place now in Castleton and have seemed to have worked very well. So, I would hope you might consider that.
Okay.
And, and my biggest concern was, was still with the COVID. I mean, I watch the news every night and, uh, we've seen, I think this is the third worst month since the COVID, since COVID started in our, in Vermont. And that's what scared me the most was to ask, uh, and, and it's a, um, an at-risk population, I'll just say, or, you know, uh, population that is going out to get sig- signatures are senior volunteers and, uh, because, um, Marissa there is from retired senior volunteer program and again, everybody's over fifty-five, just to be an RSVP. So, it makes it difficult, especially, um, you know, uh, during COVID. I mean, I'm not going door to door to ask people for signatures. I find, like Joanne said, the easiest way to get signatures is when we have our votes in November and we can stand outside. We know every, we know everybody that goes in is a registered voter. So, sometime, you know, and it's really difficult because fewer people are going in to stores. Uh, there are fewer places to put, um, our petitions. And again, even though the senior center is open, the numbers are reduced. Where we used to have sixty-five people come to an event, now we limit it to thirty and not all thirty of them are from Fairhaven. So, you know, that makes it a lot, a lot more difficult. Um, but it would be nice if we only had to get signatures every other year or if we were asking for more money.
Okay. Other comment? I think somebody's on, on right. I can't see.
I just think, I just wanted to add too, I think that, uh, the fact that this has been in place for, I think, two, maybe three years in Castleton and seems to be working well. They, they've sort of tested it, you know, so that, uh, they have, they have some history in terms of it, it seems to have done what they wanted it to do and that is to control just, you know, too, too many, uh, requests for appropriations. But only those who have been approved, uh, you know, can do without the signatures. Any new, that, any new appropriations have to go through the signature process.
All right.
Marissa, do you know of any other communities that do that?
Yes, I do. So, I actually work with many of the towns here in Rutland County and in Addison County because, um, I oversee Addison County RSVP as well. And many of the towns, as long as we are not asking for more money than the previous year that was approved, they allow us whether they're being voted on, on town meeting day for the funds or actually on the ballot. As long as everything was approved the year before, we do not have to do the petition. Um, and I know of three towns that we currently had to do petitions for. They, one, all three of the towns, as long as we were not asking for more money, did waive this year, um, to put us through to be voted on. Um, especially because of COVID. So, almost all towns are leaning towards the, as long as you are not asking for more funds and it was approved the previous year, they are allowing our amount to be voted on. And I think that's what kind of becoming quite the norm across the board, um, with many towns here in Rutland County anyway.
Okay. Uh, I know Glenn did some research. There's a model policy with, um, the LCT.
Which is exactly about what you described.
Is it?
The model, the model policy basically says that as long as the voters have voted in the past amount, it can be the same or less and it doesn't require any signatures. It does require a letter, so, because we need to know you still want it to, you know, in the same timeframe. And some towns, uh, use, also have some language in there that says, we'd also like to know how you spend the money we're giving you. And most organizations, so, so we ask for a little report for our annual town report that breaks it down. So, I went and was looking to see what our policy in Fairhaven, couldn't find one. So, I, I pulled the, the, and it's, the one that Vermont League of City and Towns has a great sample policy that, uh, says it. So, it sounds like what our, this year, COVID's still here. I, I, I think, I'm sensitive to our appropriations is getting close to, you know, well, uh, three hundred thousand dollars in appropriations. So, I'd rather that thi- this year, I don't have a problem myself personally if we, if we're saying, if it's the same as last year and COVID's still here, um, as long as you're not increasing. Uh, I, when you get into if some, someone wants, uh, someone new or an increase, I would, I would want to require the five percent of the, uh, for the signatures and I'm okay with that if the rest of the board is, but, and while we put a policy, and you won't, we'll put a policy in place that captures that. And, and it sounds like it's very similar. We can take a look at Castle and I think it's, it's good to see what, what they did and incorporated in theirs, cause it sounds like it's working very good.
It was very simple, you know, it just was in and done and that was it, you know. I haven't heard any complaints. I haven't heard any discussion about, you know, gee, I'm sorry we did that or, you know, we should have done it this way, but it's very, it seems to be very smooth.
Other thoughts that seem?
I'd, I'd wanna investigate the possibility of making it two years. Because there were some folks slid in with the, the policy of last year. They. And, and that's, they, they, they just, they saw an opportunity. They don't even serve Fairhaven, but they, they got in and so I would, they never, ever, ever had to go out for petition and talk to the people and say why it's necessary. Okay, whereas other folks, other organizations had to. So, um.
My, my concern on that, just, just so you know, I don't wanna replace what the taxpayers wanna do over what I wanna do. And the tax, even though people got in, doesn't matter if you do it every year or three years, those, you put it on the ballot and the taxpayers say, pay it, we're gonna pay it whether.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
So, I, I, yeah. So, I'm, I'm sitting back and I'm going, yeah, we had two new folks. They, they were, they weren't, they, the best way I can place it is, uh, like Rutland Regional, they, they didn't ask for a lot of money. I think, I think if they asked for a lot of money, I wouldn't, uh, with some of the new ones, I don't know if they would have got there, but I, I think that, uh, before I'd arbitrarily sit here and say you do it every two years, I guess the voters to, to weigh in, I bet, that, whether you wanna go with, uh, as long as you don't, if you have an approved, passed approved one, go with it or not, I.
Or would you say if you've, uh, in the past have had a, um, you know, you've got the appropriate number of voters to sign a petition and you were successful last year, then you wouldn't need to do it for this year?
I'm not saying we have to solve it right now, but I think we should.
It should be addressed in the policy for the long term.
We can put some language that says if you've never done the five percent signatures, I, I guess that's what you're talking about.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I don't, I don't have a problem with, when we draft this policy, throw some language in there, that, that there'll be an expectation. But I, I would also say, uh, like, uh, Rutland Regional, I, the same reasons, I don't want anyone else going out getting signatures. I won't, I don't want them going out either and putting themselves at risk. I would not do, I wouldn't enact that until we come out the other end of the tunnel that we're in, that's all.
Do you know how many, um, new appropriations you took on last year?
It was two.
It was two new, two new ones last year.
And it was, it was, it was blatant, uh, opportunistic.
Oh, yeah, it was very, very obvious. I get what you're saying.
So, until we get a policy in place, is there a motion at least so these guys have direction on?
Sure.
You, you want something, uh, I'll, I'll make a motion that for this, until we put a policy in place, uh, that any of the. until we put a policy in place, that any of the appropriations that the voters approved last year, as long as they didn't go up. If they're the same or went down, they don't need the five percent signatures this year. Any of them, even the ones that were approved, if they want to go up.
They need a petition.
I'd be looking for the, this, not the year to be going up. I want to send a message, you don't go up this year.
Okay, motion by Glenn, is there a second?
Second it.
Okay. Motion by Glenn, second, I'll by Carol. Discussion on the motion? Rob?
I, I think we're making a motion on something that is going to be addressed in a policy that we're going to enact. And it's, it's gotta be a holistic thing. I, I think we can commit today that we will have a policy that goes in that direction. But I think we have to have a discussion as, as a board with a little bit of time to think about it and, and make a policy. And then the policy stands.
But I mean, you, the organizations probably start going here soon to start collecting.
Already started.
Right.
I mean, we, we put them out, we, we haven't sent people out, but we've put petitions out in the library and at the community center.
We'll have to start really early as well.
Right. That's the only thing I'd say is.
We actually started back in the summer with our petition.
Right.
It's still haven't even come close.
So, I mean, we have a basic outline right there.
The policy is not, it's a three-page policy. We could have one in our next, it's not a huge policy. Yeah, it's, it's big.
We could probably narrow it down.
We can knock it up in, in another meeting, I could have a draft here in front of them. So.
We just get a copy of that.
And so that you're not, so we're not feeling rushed. I, I, I would feel comfortable saying, next meeting we'll have a policy in place. Understanding though, I think the, the message I want to send to the, the organizations that are out there is don't, the policy will, will have verbiage that says you don't, if you've got approved last year, don't, don't, if you're asking for more or you're new, you better figure out a way to get the signatures. But if you were approved last year, is, are you comfortable with that?
In a nutshell, I think that's what the policy is saying.
That's what the policy is gonna say.
But there may be more specifics, but in general.
I haven't seen that document at all.
No, I haven't, I haven't either.
And I feel I'm being asked to pre-approve a document and that's what I'm feeling uncomfortable with. And I don't think it's gonna take a long time.
No.
So we want a draft of the policy at the next meeting?
Yeah.
And just so you know, the letter has already gone out to all of the organizations from the town office here in Fairhaven requesting. Well, it didn't request the signatures, it just requested.
My town report.
Yeah, the town report. So that's right too.
Yeah, they were holding off until they, there was some direction from, from town.
And I think is, is there a requirement now that they, all the organizations send a letter saying that they, they want to be on the ballot for appropriations?
They have to send that with, with how much they're requesting.
Yep. But.
So if we want to try to get that at the next board meeting, Joe will send out the draft of, of policy to board members and provide him with feedback. So he can bring a final version or whatever.
And I just want to thank you. It's really, it means a lot to us to not have to do that. And, and particularly as clear, as Seal said, during COVID it was even worse. But it's always been a terrible challenge for us, you know, getting older adults to go out and get those hundred signatures. So we're really grateful, very, very grateful for your safety is under consideration. Thank you.
And just housekeeping.
I would also like to say thank you as well from RSVP. Because Seal is one of our volunteers that has done a lot of footwork for us in the past as well and even this year too. And it's, it's getting more and more difficult with especially COVID and this is a huge help as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And Glenn is gonna.
I'll make sure that this, I'll remove, I'll withdraw my motion that I put out earlier.
Or is there, since I haven't seen it, is there a language in there about the annual report is what they spent their money on?
Annual report, having to show what you did for the money.
You mentioned it, but, you know, I'd, I'd want to see that in the, in the policy.
Okay. So Joe will have a draft. Jeff, go ahead.
That was my only question was can we, right now there's no, no real teeth. So if somebody doesn't submit the report, they, they still can come in next year. Can we make that a requirement that if you don't get, get any more report?
Right.
My, my response there, absolutely, Jeff. It's in, it's in the, it's, it's gonna be in the draft policy you see where, one of the requirements are that you've gotta, you've got to give something for our annual report. You've got to account for the monies.
And Castleton does that too. So it's interesting. I don't know if that's in their policy as well, but I know that they require that, just as Fairhaven does. They require the letter and the report.
Yeah. And the, the bigger thing, Jeff, was that when I went and did the research, I couldn't find a single document that talked about how you handle appropriations for, for a past policy. So I, I think it'll clean up a, a little loose end for us as well.
The only question I would have on that is, it's a policy, but if someone does go out and get five percent petition, which is the legal amount to get it on a ballot, I don't think the board has much authority to say yea or nay. It's.
Right.
So I mean, it's.
No, no. All I would, all we would be able to do in this policy is say that they needed to get.
Get the petition to the five percent.
Next year's ballot.
Sure, that's the only teeth there is really for it. Yep. I would agree, Jeff.
But it's a little bit more than we have today.
Yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Good.
And it sets up guidelines for future years that, you know, we're not gonna look kindly if you don't provide some information to the voters as to how you spent their money.
Could I, could I offer a suggestion? For the policy, I, I know there are several organizations that work in a lot of towns and, you know, countywide. And the report that I, that I, that the town of Fairhaven gets is the same report that like Rutland City gets. You really can't break out what work is done in Fairhaven, which is frustrating because voters want to know what was spent in Fairhaven. Could, could, is, could we add that to the policy saying we want to know the work done in our town, not what was done aggregate in the county?
I think the letter says that now.
I think the letter.
The letter says it now.
We may request, but.
Doesn't happen.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll get Rutland's numbers and it's just like.
I know our letter says that, that we sent to you specifically what our volunteers do in your town.
That's, I think that's important.
We break out, we break out transportation, we break out meals. We try to break out all of our exercise classes in terms of Fairhaven, Castleton and Uberton so that the towns know, you know, what, how many people from their towns are receiving services.
And I, and I know that we've come to the select board, maybe not last year to the COVID, but maybe just three or four years, every year we talk about what our organizations and I think I do a lot for Fairhaven, concerned the community.
At town.
Yeah.
How we impact the lives of the residents here in Fairhaven. We're always, we're always more than happy to do that.
Okay, great.
Very good. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, ARPA funds introductory discussion.
I'm, Glenn, I'm gonna introduce this, but.
You and Glenn have done some.
Most, I, I can't take much credit. This is mostly Ben Glenn. But I think as everybody knows, there's, there's, there is currently and going to be an influx of cash into the town through the, through the ARPA funding, which is coming from the federal government down to the state level and then down to us. We're gonna, the town of Fairhaven will receive more than seven hundred thousand dollars. There are kind of strings attached to that money. There are categories we need to choose. How you spend that money. There's outreach that needs to be done. And they're really recommending committees and really kind of a grassroots up kind of concept of which projects, which projects get funded. And with that, I will pass it over to Glenn because he has a lot more information on this topic than I do.
After that, I, I know I'm gonna disappoint.
The bar is high.
I spent a, a day when the Vermont League of City and Towns did their town fair, they had an all-day session just on ARPA. And so with that, I, I just captured some notes. Just put in, in what was passed out to board here, the highlights on that. It starts off with, with a little background, the first page where it talks about the seven different categories. And so that you can use the funds for, and, and when you, the big message and the takeaway from that was make sure you may have a, a project that could fall into one or two places, put it in the most flexible place. So I always go with the most flexible. Probably on page two, because we're at a point now where they're, they're getting the rules, getting closer with the rules of what you can and can't do. But there's a key element that of going out, finding out what, what people would like to see their ARPA funding spent on. So on page two, there, there's a little format, a five-step approach that talks about, okay, building a team that, that would go ask and include different, get outreach for different groups for what, what they think would be, would be good for the ARPA funding. And there's so many different ways of getting, whether you go to the different groups, send out flyers, do it through the minutes here. But once you've taken and done that, we probably need to be pulling some people together in the meeting and get a sense for what the taxpayers in town, for example, do they want to use ARPA funding to help with some infrastructure, like to our overrides on our sewer as a result of COVID and all the price or anything. Do you want to take, do something there? But at least get an idea, get people in the room so they can say, these are our priorities, whether that's short-term or long-term. Other thing that in that day, there were some people who spoke, I thought Senator Becca Blyant from Wyndham County, I mean, she says, you know, what are your priorities? What are your values? And make sure you spend your money when, when you're thinking on those lines. Another person who, who talked to was the project manager for Two Rivers Outta Queche Planning Commission. I thought, had some really great advice. One of the, on the top was, don't do dumb things. And I'm going, you know, it sounds, it sounds obvious, but you're right. Yeah, and making sure when in doubt, don't be afraid to ask on this. Everyone's going through this whole thing together. Two different key dates came up. One, there was a progress report that we owe on our ARPA funding. It was October thirtieth, it got pushed out. The new date is now April thirtieth of 2022. And really that progress report, by then we should have already reached out, got the information from people of what their priorities are. We've got a pretty good idea of this is our priority of our, of our projects where we want to spend the money and probably report on that. Other key date you're gonna see in the document is on page six when it says, ARPA funding, you have to obligate it by 2024 and spend it by 2026. So my, my only advice on that one from listeners is to, don't, don't treat that as I get it done by, you want to be done with those. Step back about a year on each of those dates and, because you're gonna slide on, on everything you're working on. Let's see if there was anything else without getting into reading. Another big takeaway was when you're spending ARPA money and because of the reporting requirements, making sure your town's financial policies are in order. Big piece of, you don't want, you don't want to get into a level one audit where you're spending over seven hundred thousand dollars on that. But I went, I took the opportunity to go look and see some of our, our financial policies. And the first one I pulled up said, this one's no longer in use. Go see the minutes from this select board meeting on this day. That didn't give me a warm fuzzy feeling that I had a policy that was gonna stand the test. So probably one of the things coming out here, we might want to start, you know how we're looking at a policy, a meeting or something like that? We might want to take our financial policies, move them up to the front of the list and, and just do one at a time and, and, and work our way through those. I'll leave you with the last thought because you, you can read the, the stuff that we have here. But Governor Scott came on for a while and I, I thought he was spot on when he said, you know, there's four principles to consider when you start looking at ARPA funding. You know, you want something that's transparent, transformative, timely and targeted. He had his four Ts going there, but I'm, I'm saying, you know, that's, that's pretty good as we're talking and bringing things in to say, what do we want to look at? So that's ARPA in a nutshell.
Questions for, CO, questions for Glenn or?
ARPA for dummies. I, you know, I guess my question is, what is the main purpose of the ARPA fund? Is it to help towns recover?
Absolutely. But because of, because of COVID, the towns didn't have revenue coming in or weren't able to do projects or by, they had to put off projects that now cost three and four times as much. There are some things that it, that it, you can't spend ARPA money on. And, but those were, were things like supplementing pension plans and paying, paying some overtime in some places on, on that line. But for the most part, replacing revenues, improving water, sewer and broadband. When you go back to those top seven, right there is pretty good. The most important thing when I walked away after a day of listening to ARPA, I'm saying, clear message. Don't go spending your ARPA funding on something that's gonna cost you more money to maintain than what you're already paying in taxes. This is one-time fund. So go find someplace where you got hurt because of this whole COVID for the last two years and go, and if you can fix something there, that's probably a pretty good use at, using one-time funding.
Could an example be a salt shed that's twice the cost now?
Could be, could be a salt shed that's a half a million dollar shot, a salt shed, which I'm still thinking Jersey barriers, putting something, a little something on the top and a half a million dollars. I, I'm just trying to put my head around it.
I'm right there with you.
But, yeah, that's.
And the same with the lighting projects. You know, I mean, we've been waiting for the lighting projects for a long time. And, you know, one year we didn't have the concerts because of COVID. This year we did. You know, I mean, the, the need for lighting is, you know, is really important. I mean, we can use the park so much more if there are lights there. We can go, you know, longer into the evening, you know, and maybe the farmer's market wouldn't have to shut down early because of, of the dark kind of thing. So.
Absolutely.
But there's a lot of things in town that were put on the back burner. And now you don't, you can't even get supplies and you can't, you know, and if you do get them, they're very expensive. And I hope you can find the people to do it. I know my son's in construction down in Florida and that's the problem they have.
Oh, yeah, can people, costs or not.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you. All right, next item, let me see. Water sewer allocation for Stewart. Well, first of all, I'm gonna abstain from this one, so I'm not gonna vote on it or participate. And I've asked Glenn to kind of run the discussion on this one. Glenn, do you want?
Sure. And Joe, do you, the water sewer allocation for Stewart, so you have the document, do you want to share what it says? I do. So the new Stewart's building up at the corner of Dutton, North Main and Fourth Street there, they did send in their initial request for water sewer allocation. That went through our, our process, it went through the staff and they, they approved that allocation. That, that portion of the allocation. Now this time we got to go through the board of selectmen asking for final water allocation. They're asking for one thousand five hundred and seventy-six gallons, both water and sewer. That is a little increase from what it was before, but the state forced the increase. They, they don't believe they'll use that much. And they did pay all their fees and the check is, is here. So if the board so approves.
And, and we have, just checking to see if I'm correct, we're, our sewer capacity is probably sixty-five percent. So we have all kinds of sewer capacity and we have all kinds of water.
Yeah, we have more than enough capacity, both sewer and water.
If you were gonna ask, I mean, it's okay.
We have enough water at the water treatment plant. Do we have enough flow down to their location?
Yeah, pressure is good down here. It's once you get closer to the treatment. Yeah, pressure is good down here. Um, it's once you get closer to the treat, uh, to the water treatment plant. Up towards Jeff, that's pressure kinda dies off when you get up there.
Yes, that's, that's, that's what I was thinking of. But I think that was because we were going up the hill.
I know that's our guys of both water sewer and DPW, Aaron looked at it, no, there's no concern about pressure there. Maybe it was fixed, maybe it was fixed before I got here.
But, okay, if they've looked at it, you you have a definitive answer.
Yeah, it's, and and this is for um, the board, uh, the chair to sign as well. Well, Glenn, I guess.
Now, so you're looking for a motion from someone to?
To approve the final water sewer allocation for the new Stewart's building.
I make a motion to approve the final water sewer allot, allocation for Stewart's, the new Stewart's.
Any other discussion?
Oh, oh, and and authorize Glenn to to sign it for the board.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
So next item, water line tapping permit for the National Guard Building?
Yeah, so this, this particular permit didn't require uh, any additional allocation. They just wanted to tap in. Tap in so that way they can have a sprinkler system. And this permit, all fees have been paid. Um, and Aaron is, Aaron did take a look and he has the plans for this, for this project. And again, I need the board to approve.
So this is, they're tapping into the main or are they tapping, tapping into the main?
Tap, they're supposed to tap into the main line that runs right past their building.
And it's a metered or is it just a feed?
It's, so this, so you know, they have a line there now, but they need a bigger line.
Gotcha.
So they're gonna connect their, they're gonna connect a bigger line.
Gotcha.
So that way it feeds, so that way they can also.
Not that they're gonna consume more unless it's in the case of a fire.
Yeah, that's why there's no additional request.
Gotcha, okay. All right, um, is there a motion for that?
I make a motion uh, to approve the water line tapping permit for the National Guard Building.
Okay, is there a second? Uh, motion by. Motion by Rod, seconded by Carol, to approve the water, what do we call this? The water line tapping permit for the National Guard Building.
Is this for just the chair? Okay, and for the chair to sign for the board.
Other questions? All in favor? That motion carries. All right, budget review. Continues.
Joe, I know you put in your packet, right? So we've, we've jumped into the O one O budget. Tonight, we're dealing with the select board, uh, the police department, which the chief is here. Um, constables and then just kind of a sundry of of smaller topics.
Joe, do you wanna go through any, how do you wanna handle it? Do you wanna do?
Um, I I could give you a brief overview and then uh. Yeah, so the marked pages are the pages with the departments that we're talking about tonight and then the highlighted department are the ones that specifically.
So select board, is there any?
I, um, I I flattened that budget, um, and when I reviewed it, but we didn't, the EDC did meet last night. And there, there is a request from the EDC chair.
Okay, this is where I get myself in trouble. I'm usually the one trying to take money, take money away. Uh, on, there's an economic development line item where we had five thousand dollars last year. Uh, that we're, we're, we're going to exhaust. Would, would like to, um, as an economic development committee. We talked about, uh, the need for a part-time economic development type of a person or director. We looked at, we looked at and see how, what towns are doing really great with economic development. Puntley, for example, they're a part-time economic development director, uh, they have a budget of twenty-six thousand for them. Now, I'm, I know better than to ask for, for that on top of of operating funds. But uh, would like to. We need to uh, do a, uh, the Fairhaven website. Enhancement, which we've, we've gotten some numbers, it says anywhere from four to eight thousand dollars. Yeah, uh, to to do that and and there's, there's different ways. Long story short, I'd like to ask for. Uh, more funding. I'm gonna start asking for more than what I think I'm gonna get, so I'm, I, I was looking to put twenty thousand.
The buildup is just intense.
It's a strange position that I'm actually asking for money instead of.
So you're, you're asking for fifty-two hundred dollars now?
No, I'm, I'm asking, no, I'm, I'm asking for an additional twenty thousand for economic development. So that would be afforded, overall, the select board budget item would go up to forty-three, uh, two hundred. Uh, I'm just throwing it out to see what your, our thoughts are that with that, the payback on that. What you get for the additional twenty thousand?
Is that for salary, like to hire somebody a quarter of the time or something?
They would come in, the, the goal would not only to to have them do the, the, the marketing of the town. But it would be the chair, the economic, I've been the temporary chair of the economic development committee for. Over a year now and I'm saying, okay, it's uh, trying to put some wheels on this thing to go. This person would be the chair of that committee, but also would be the one that could be laser focused. On economic development, marketing and getting.
Talking about this probably too much tonight, but one visit to the Satchel Ruin Company really opened my eyes to. If there were other things that we could have in a town like this, that will be a real draw once people get. Try it, you know, and then the mural that was pointed right out, painted right outside of it, it's beautiful. But I think finding the right person for that amount of salary, so we should increase it to a hundred and fifty thousand.
Sounds like a motion.
But I think, um. I think it's well worth the money, cause I think we'll get a good investment, but we'll have to be very careful to hire the right person that can make things happen.
Does like Castleton have one or maybe you could go to Puntley and share that person and both fund into it maybe? To benefit the community versus hiring our own and then if you could, you share it services basically and then somebody's already doing it, has knowledge.
We've started conversations with the, their, their economic development directors. As a matter of fact, they, they got us hooked up with in December. The new owners of Green Mountain College are coming to talk to us and we're looking to bring them in. That, they wanna do a little meet and greet and talk. It was more to pick ideas, but could. See, what I'm thinking is they're, they're making twenty-six now in Puntley. And the twenty thousand isn't just for salary. I'm, I'm thinking more, you gotta keep the five thousand that that was there for. The things that that they already were spending and it's more like, wouldn't, would we be able to do something with, with giving fifteen thousand? On top of their twenty-six thousand, they're working part-time, find out what their part-time is. If it's, you know, twenty hours a week, uh, that that they're doing, there's, there's a lot of time that we could left over. Where maybe they could do ours for fifteen thousand, we wouldn't.
I could see us being in competition with each other.
Right, I was just thinking, it's like Google.
That is the other, that is, that is the downside of utilizing, when I, they don't have one, to my knowledge, in Castleton. Uh, an, an economic development person, uh, I, I, I looked at their line items and the last budget and it wasn't, they didn't have it there.
My thought was, yeah, you might be competition, but you also might get the two, that person to promote both areas. So if somebody wants to come and Puntley doesn't have the space, but Fairhaven does, if you get an employer to come here, it only benefits.
They would encourage them to come to Fairhaven and fill our space because they don't have, they don't have the downtown space.
What about ARPA money for that? I mean, uh, negative economic impact, COVID's definitely had a negative impact on, on our area.
If you move the money to, um.
Treat it like it was a grant, a one-time fund for.
I mean, cause you could use it for.
Position for three years to establish. You have, you have until twenty twenty-six to utilize the funding.
You could use it under replacing revenues, cause that's just like cash in your pocket at that point.
Because we could show the businesses that have gone out.
And theoretically, in three years, if we were, it, it was hugely successful. Then, then you can justify continuing to carry it. But I, I would, I, I would think that. Well. Even if there was no competition, I think there would be a lot of people visualizing competition.
Competition whether it was there or not.
Whether, whether it was there or not.
It was, when Lyle Jepson came in from Cedar, one of the big takeaways from him. Uh, and, and, and the other two people that came in was, as we were talking, marketing and and the brand, the Fairhaven brand. Uh, they're saying, you need someone that that's their job is economic development. That was the big takeaway from that meeting. So again, that was just another.
So why don't we leave it here now, just as a placeholder? I know, I think everybody thinks it's a good idea. Can we use some additional funding?
I guess the question I have is, i- is it enough to fund just that salary? Don't you have to have monies to do the things that they suggest that we do? That's what we had a problem with when Tim was on the board. We had all these great ideas for marketing the town. But there was not, we didn't put money in the budget for doing all the things that they said that we should do.
I can see this person potentially using the ARPA funding as, you know, the position to manage that fund. Maybe it's all economic development and that person is responsible for. I don't know, working those projects, I don't know.
I don't think we'd get much for twenty thousand dollars.
No, that's what you need.
It's part-time, someone who works from home.
There's, well, that's what I was gonna say. There's people out there right now that are lost physicians that did something about the website, updating the website. There's people that I can think of right now, that lost physicians because of COVID, that could, that was their work, they could do that. Or that have recently retired. And those things, we might be able to parcel out in a smaller way, like, you know, just have them be responsible for that. But to get a person that's really gonna focus and move economic development, I, I love the idea. I think we should try to do it, but for twenty thousand, it's not gonna.
There's no way you can do it for, like the one in Puntley, they couldn't do it for you. They, they paid for a full-time position through a grant. The grant went away and that's why they had a part-time person at twenty-six thousand. Um, if, it, can we thank ARPA for a position like this? And on the same line, like when Rob was saying, you gotta have some money, that five thousand. Do, do we change this five thousand to ten thousand? That that's the, forget about the physician, that doesn't include a physician. That's to get in Main Street America, work on a website. Uh, we're, we're working on a community bulletin board, uh, that, that, that looks very nice, that's out there with activities that's going on in, in the town. That would, that you need materials, even if you had donated labor to build the thing.
Well, we could leave a marker on both, not have both, but and maybe get the answer to the ARPA funding for the position. As long as we're not gonna be taking away from other things that, probably fifteen different things we could think of.
All right, so I'll put a place over there. I mean, I think it's.
So I mean, maybe, maybe it's, uh, you fund the position the first year and then that person has to define. The other monies that we would need the following year. Because we're not gonna be able to spend it all. We could spend it all in one year, but not the first year. Cause we don't even know what we don't know yet.
Um, I think we're, I don't know what we go with the two.
Put markers to go to ten thousand and one.
Right, I was looking at five to ten and then put the twenty and whatever that is. I think it's between, the part-time person they have is twenty-six, I would say it's between twenty and thirty. Find out what we, if, if you can eligible and use ARPA money and make, turn that into. Twenty thousand is this part of your job is doing economic development and the other is. A grant administration, ARPA grant administration and you get a, that brings the, the full whatever job you have. And there's some more, I don't know.
As long as we tie it to ARPA. Yeah, it can't be grant administration for, just normal grants, because that position.
So for now, can we take the five, turn it into ten thousand? And then circle a economic development director, whatever that, that funding, ARPA or whatever. Cause we still need to figure that. It may not have to come into this budget if we can get it from ARPA.
We're getting Glenn way too much. He's gonna think he's.
I, I, I'm really gonna think I, I should go out and buy a lottery ticket.
Get it to him now, but. Right. Shouldn't hold on to it too long. All right, so we bumped that up to ten, the line is now a total of ten thousand. Ten right now. With a placeholder for.
What is it we always say, this is good for a first read?
It's good for a first pass.
Wait until we choke on the end.
I know, I'm gonna see that percentage at the end.
All right, um, so that was select board. Now, police training.
It goes, it goes, it goes left to right.
Let's go up to the police department first.
And, and this is the police chief's here to talk about his department. I, I did find a, a typo under administrative assistant. Uh, you'll see that that's a point three one percent increase. Uh, that is the, that is the pay for the, uh, the administrative assistant. For the police department. Um, we should see, um. That line item should be sixteen thousand one one five for the two and a, two and a quarter percent increase. Does that make sense? Did I say that right?
Okay, Bill, do you wanna give it just the kind of brief overview of your?
Um, most everything was, uh, the, the full-time line was a two point two five percent increase. Um, the part-time salary, it appears to Tommy and I are allowing, I wanted to go to eighteen thousand. I gave him a pay scale, I'm trying to do a tiered system with the part-timers. Um, I have some guys making fifteen, some making sixteen, some making eighteen, one making twenty. So I'm trying to do, start at level three, which is a full-time certified guy at twenty. Um, a level two E would be nineteen fifty and a level two would be nineteen. Um, I have some, like I said, right now, unfortunately McDonald's pays more than some of their part-timers, so I'm trying to bring them up to scale with other agencies. They have not been getting any raises unless we decide to get them a raise. Joe suggested that we, we do a two point two five with them also. Just across the board, um, starting July.
Don't we expect the salary increases to be more than two point two five percent?
This is what we negotiated for next year. Our time is.
So three, three-year contract is destroyed.
So I don't know what the, you know, what, what the union, you know, proposing or negotiating that, so I don't, mine is done. So I was proposing bringing them up to the, the pay scale that I talked about and then July one, they would get the two point two five. Percent raise, um, in that line item, which would. Um, in that line item, which to me would be a little more money than the thirteen thousand. I know historically, that's what we've used. Um, the last, um, couple of budget seasons. Um, I've had, have had trouble getting people to work, so I have to make some shifts unfortunately, so that might be some of the reason why they're low. It's very hard to get people to work at the moment, so that's my spiel on the part-timer.
So what did you wanna propose?
I said eighteen, Joe went to down to thirteen. I believe that's what the paperwork was, Joe, if I remember.
The part-time is thirteen.
So at the minimum, I'd like to go back to where I was at fifteen thousand, and see where it shakes out after we try to increase the rate, the wages. Um, they do provide a valuable service, um, you know, call and sick time and coverage if I can get staffing. You know, but we're in the same as everybody else at the moment.
I, just coming off contract negotiations, um, at the hospital, and we have a lot of entry-level positions there, just as you're saying with the, um, the police. I don't think we can afford to pay people with the minimum wages right now. You're never gonna get anybody. So going up, so to me, I would think is a necessity.
I'd like to a little higher than that, but I'm trying to be fair and.
I, I would be careful about, uh, your full-time officers that are getting the two point two five increase. And giving your part-timers a, well, the perception that their in, that their increase is greater. Uh, I'm, I don't wanna build a problem.
Well, what I'm looking at now is, is, I actually have been trying to do the raise since July, Jenny was gone for most of the summer. And then I, I put it in, and Joe and I talked, we agreed we should do something, so he has the paperwork to do it effective now. But he wanted to wait until we had discussed it with you guys on your thoughts. So now we would just bring him up to a competitive wage, get everybody on where they are, and then July one of next year would be the actual two point two five, and I don't think any of my full-timers would complain being that they're already like some. I think that my lowest officer's at a twenty-three dollars an hour, so they're already, some of them are five or six dollars an hour less than where they are. They, they do perform the same jobs, but we don't provide any benefits for them. They don't get retirement, they don't get healthcare, they don't get anything.
Just have to be careful of the pressure.
Well, I'm looking at the gremlin, that the last time we, we did an adjustment, when we ended up getting, you know, people in the union with, with, wanting the same, I, having to deal with, uh, then, wait a minute, why don't you, you should be adjusting us too. And I, I don't know if I'm really comfortable with going in and making a problem where I didn't.
Well, I guess I'm gonna use the same argument, if you have a contract that you use, I'm not giving them merit rates, unless you have a contract negotiation, and that can be brought up during negotiations.
Yeah.
This is non-union employees, and we're gonna, we have to take care of them at some point, we're not paying them enough. Sixteen dollars an hour is not enough for you to come to work and put this job on anymore. When you can seventeen and suck hamburgers at McDonald's, and I'm not being disrespectful, I understand. There is not a problem between the union and the part-timers, because my union recognizes, they need them. Like, uh, this whole weekend, if I didn't get guys to step up, I'd have no coverage, because I have to, either that or tonight, my guys taking days off. So they recognize that they need their Saturday night off, they need somebody to work for them.
I'm, I know, I'm just looking at overall. Again, I, I'm just trying to help the overall budget when, when we start thinking. When we get a, a, a police department budget in the three hundred and fifty thousand range. I don't wanna put it in a range that's gonna get us discussing, we can't afford this, this much.
Looking at fifteen thousand dollars, so it doesn't.
I understood, un- understood, but it all, it's all money.
Alright, Bill, anything else in?
Um, I think everything else stayed the same. The copier, we just signed a new lease on the copier that's within a few dollars.
We go to fifteen?
I didn't. You, you wanna?
I, I wanted to finish first.
Okay.
Bill, go ahead, finish.
Just discussion, this.
The overtime, um, looks to be on pace, or we had changed that last year. Um, office supplies, most everything else that we flatlined. Um, then, like I said, we have a new copier that, we signed a new lease on, I think it's a couple dollars more than what we have in here, um, it's a five-year lease. So I think that, like I said, the, the part-time is the only thing that, that I had any questions on, the part-time salaries, and trying to get. Um, that. The only other thing that's not in the budget that I wanted to talk about was the thought on creating like a local ordinance officer. So right now, any junk complaints, I'm doing. And, which I'm okay doing it, but it does take away time, so. And my thought was, if you had, if you had fifteen hundred dollars in this line item, and that person wouldn't even do Phil's outreach work, like the chickens, Phil's going around doing chickens. So you have a local ordinance officer that just handles your junk ordinance and could do any of that stuff. It might free up the bus to not have to do that type of work, so that's just something food for thought that I've been toying with Joe, we talked for like the last six months about.
Yeah, that, that would be a great help, cause, um, I know the zoning administrator, it's not, it's, he's not an officer and it's very unpleasant. He's not trained to, to handle these sometimes very aggressive people, so. That, that's something.
Doesn't have to be a police officer, can be just somebody designated to be that, I don't wanna say code enforcement like that. So I do the job for the town of Grellon, that's the same thing, but it's called local ordinance. Something like code enforcement falls under that, but it's the junk ordinance and the junk complaints and that kind of stuff, and it's, it's basically um, not, we aren't sending the guys out looking for problems, it's, it's complaint-based, is kinda where we're at. And it could be anybody that, you know, got chosen, that had the right demeanor to do that job, and the knowledge.
Okay.
Um, but that's on the full-time, like I said, on the, the, that section, that's pretty much where I'm at.
Okay.
Just, question on the SRO special services, when I'm seeing that you're proposing thirty-seven. The, the axials were, you know, forty-seven to fifty. What's, what, it was more of just saying, what, what's happened differently there? What's changed?
Oh, that, that thirty-seven is a, is a placeholder. Because you might have, it's all your like security details that we do. The road construction that we do will all come out of this line item, and that shows on the in, back and for revenue, so like the fence and hayride gets paid out of that line item. So, and the, the SRO salary is out of that line item, but there's, we always start to seem to run over it. Um, it's hard to figure, but we could put, raise it or lower it or whatever, but it's a placeholder to show that this is the line item. And then if you look at the revenue side, you'll see it on the backside.
More than I've said.
If that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's the question.
Alright, um, so going back to, yeah, Joe.
Uh, this is a question for Bill. Bill, did you wanna talk about communications? Cause I did take nine thousand out of that for the.
Uh, so, yeah, I forgot, I actually forgot about that. Um, the communications line item, and again, I talked to Bob Helm, Bob Helm's gonna reach out to Jim Harrison. Is the whole movement issue with dispatch. The state police wanna start charging you twenty, two thousand this budget. And they wanted to do a quarter, twenty-five percent, and each year fifty, seventy-five, and a hundred. The legislators, legislation has taken that away from the state police. Um, Bob Helm and Jim Harrison said there will be a fee, but they're gonna set the fee, not the state police. That hasn't been done yet, so I don't know where that's gonna be. At one point, we were at a hundred thousand, and then after argued with them, they got it down to seventy thousand for us. But that was still, like, we've made changes, um, and I'm gonna continue to argue with them when they come back with what the number's gonna be. The four-five, two-six-five, four-five-three-one number used to ring directly to the state police. We, with the new phone system that Joe brought in, it actually rings our office first, so we get a chance to triage a phone call. You know, my cat's in the tree. Dispatch automatically starts a case, can respond animal problem. I don't need a case for that. You know, we had lawnmower that rolled out into the road. Dale Lily went down there and pushed it back on the sidewalk, I had her sale, state police started a case. Under their new formula, that would've been a fifty-three dollar call. So I said to the captain, like, to do, uh, so that's been my argument. So we've changed where we're starting our own cases, and then with the new valve core system coming in, I know how that's gonna work. Um, so everything funnels into our office first, at least gives us an opportunity to answer the phone if somebody's here to try to eliminate their work on that end, which is gonna be my argument back to them. You know, we've, they, so they're going off two thousand eighteen numbers. Two thousand eighteen numbers, the thing was, start me a directed patrol case, I'll be on crosswalk. Because I had dispatch going and starting to push a button and say, one-one-five North Main Street, twice a day. We're getting a hundred and six dollars in their theory calls, so I've gone back to them, and so that's where some of the calls, they went out trying to flush out on the numbers, that's why it went from a hundred thousand down to seventy. And I think if we dive into that deeper, we can even come down farther. Um, so I don't know where to go on that placeholder on communications line item. They say in turn, they're not gonna charge us for anything else, um, except email. You know, they're not gonna charge us for the crime system, not gonna charge us anymore for that stuff, under the new system, but you are, cause you're going from ten grand to seventy thousand.
So for that line item, um, the chief did have eighteen thousand in there. I did cut it back to nine, just because we weren't sure what that cost looked like, or even when that cost was coming, so I, I just flatlined that, that budget line.
I don't know what, where to go with that. I don't have any good answers. There's no concrete, on this date, you're gonna start paying.
Okay.
So I don't want you to give blind side when I come in, oh, here's a twenty thousand dollar bill for this year. We don't know what's.
Alright. Um, so that's your overview, going back to the part-time salary. I know there was some discussion on that. I mean, I do see it too, the bottom of the market, I mean, it's just increasing so much. The minimum wage jobs are.
You gotta keep up with it. I think it's unprecedented times, yeah.
You know, they're starting at fifteen, like you said, uh, some of the fast food places, and it's hard to find.
Seventeen, all these, they're a big sign is out there, I mean, you gotta keep up with it. You don't have anybody.
How many hours does the? You can do the pay increase, but leave the budget at fifteen. Uh, how many hours of coverage loss does that represent?
Um, well, like right now, I have wiggle room from what we used last year, say eleven thousand, thirteen thousand. So that's the wiggle room, hopefully can make it up back to the fifteen. So I don't think we're losing any hours coverage. I mean, there's a caveat, if, if I have a guy that's, goes out sick with COVID for a month. I gotta backfill a part-time, so you might see that number increase. Um, on how much we use it based on vacation coverage, weed coverage, sick time coverage, you know, long-term injury or illness. So that number could fluctuate. I don't have any regularly scheduled shifts every week. I usually, in a six-week schedule, I have two, two to three open shifts, the way the schedules rotate. Sometimes it's two, sometimes it's three, in, in an eight-week, so in an eight-week rotation, I think I have four to five shifts depending. But what I've been doing is if the schedules rotate, on a Saturday, I end up with two guys, I've been moving one of them. If it's, it, one of them really likes it, cause I'll move him from, from Saturday, so I'll add a day on his week. So he'll have six days in a row, the way the two weeks run, but then he'll have five off on the other end. So, but then I'm filling the hole with the full-timer, and I'm making him happy by giving him a week off, the way the schedule. So I've been trying to do that as much as I can, um, trying to be flexible to move around on, on shift coverage, the full-timers the most.
And do they get overtime on the sixth day?
No.
You know?
No, because the way the schedule, it's a two-week schedule, so the way they work, they'll sit at four in one week, so say they have they work Monday, but if you go backwards, they'll have four days, it's, it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah.
And then their fifth day is actually the next week.
Starts on the next pay period.
So then the next pay period, they'll move to cover Tuesday. They work six days in a row, but then the, the other week, they'll end up with.
Yeah.
Alright, so proposals at thirteen, is there, are we wanting to push it back to fifteen, or?
We can.
It's our first, it's our first draft, and I, I, Jeff, I don't want you saying that I, when I say we have to cut there on that line after, but, uh, we're, we're good, let's go back to fifteen.
Alright. Anything else, Billy, you wanna?
No, I think everything else is good, and, you know, we're, we're monitoring the budget, I think we're spot on.
Okay.
Um, with, with our numbers. I haven't talked to Joe on the recent numbers, I didn't hear him say where we were, but I don't think we're over. I think we're maybe slightly under.
Your, uh, your part-time salary was at forty-eight percent, so the, the part-time salary is being used.
Well, there was part of it in there that I know, with Jenny gone, and I have to have Jenny go back and work. Cause I think that somebody, there was eight hundred dollars at least that the animal control offered you. The, their line item hasn't gone down any. And the animal control, we had like eight hundred for the year, and we had spent seven hundred ninety-nine, cause he got inundated in the first two months with calls, but I think they all got paid out of part-time, so I think there might be an adjustment, make it back. I have to, we'll have Jenny look at that, I actually forgot about it till now.
Okay.
Just gonna, just gonna throw out a pitch for cross-training again.
Jeff, we're, we're actively cross-training. Um, I know this, this is, this is one of the most important things for me. Um, I have got the message, uh, but Eileen had to learn her job, her job first. We couldn't go without having that person up front, taking, taking in taxes. Taking in water and sewer bills. Um, considering we lost somebody that was here for almost a decade, and then having an unexpected accountant go out for almost three months. Um, we all pulled together and we, we did pretty good. There was a loss of knowledge, and we're filling that gap now with directed trainings, but we are doing cross-training with everybody. We will never have two accountants, but we are cross-training everybody to fill the gaps, including myself.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Bill. Um, police training. It's not much.
No, I think we upped it a little bit, just because of. Some of it is, is supplies, is the ammunition's gone crazy.
Yeah.
Like, we can't even get, we put a purchase order in in March, hasn't even arrived yet. We end up actually getting some locally here from, um, from Liberty, at a little higher rate to try to get our annual qualms in. So we're still waiting on the, the, from the March order, and it doesn't look like it's gonna let up on that, and the prices are skyrocketing. Um, most everything is good, there's been some increases in, in some, some, some dues, but for the most part, I think we're good.
Okay, questions on that? Um, vehicles, equipment?
Um, this one's pretty much been flatlined, you know, I'm obviously worried about gas, because gas is shut up a lot, but that's such a fluctuating market. Um, if you look back at our, you know, historical average, even, we've always gotten by with kinda what we proposed, and that's who knows where we'll be next year with the push for, you know, electric vehicles, are that, that gonna go off to try to force people over yet? I don't know. And I don't think the infrastructure's in place enough for us to switch over.
Yeah.
To electric yet.
Okay. Questions on that? First pass, no?
I think overall, the budget's mostly flatlined, other than the, the negotiated salary increases, I don't, and that communication looming. There's some line items that I think have been the same since I became chief in two thousand and five, I don't think they're going up.
Alright, constables.
How you doing?
Good, I know.
So I guess a lot of it, looking through it, um, there's some challenges, we've been kinda down the same road for some of the newer members on the board. Um, you know, it's a, it's a smaller budget, you know, we did have the problems of COVID, where a lot of the events and different things that maybe we draw a lot of that salary, you know, whether it be you know, Memorial Day parades, maybe more time at Halloween, et cetera, depending. Um, there hasn't been as much patrol work. Usually when I work, I'll put in a, uh, timesheet with Jenny. Fees and services. A lot of times, our second constable, Sean Galvin, a lot of times he uses the time. So it's kinda hard to come back to you and prove what we need for a budget, based on that. You know, we, for us, Sean and I have other means that pay our bills every day, and, you know, we're here to help the community, I think it's much more, and then it helps offset, if you really look at what we have into it, it's probably a negative equity type situation, but. For me, generally, I find about fifteen hundred dollars covers my side of it, um, on average. That gives you like an hour and a half a week, so there's times, there's more, there's less, depends what Bill, if he needs help with stuff, you know, it's all a balance. You know, like I say, it hasn't been as much, we're admitted other stuff. So that's something to kinda deal with that. So if you look at that, I mean, we've been running, you're down, dropping to four hundred. It's hard for me to sit here and say, well, I'd really rather see it stay at the twenty-three hundred. I think it would be behoove us to leave it at the twenty-three hundred, just based on if he is gonna start putting that timing, cause I'm probably gonna, on average, eat that fifteen hundred dollars up, and is that gonna leave us short? I think you will find it, not like we work for revenue, but with the ticket stuff mainly written by Sean, it more than counteracts. And if we get into that, maybe we have to sit down and have a discussion. With Jenny being out, it's been a little bit hard disseminating when he's writing tickets, if he's writing one of the constables, it has to be sorted out once it comes in from, uh, from the ticket bureau. So we can get that done, or whatever, just with everything going on, it's hard to kinda figure it out, bring that good data into you. I don't, Jenny had higher priorities, and, you know, getting with Bill and stuff, just kinda see where we're at, that kinda helps maybe offset when we're. Offset when we're kind of dealing with that. So. I guess we can work around that too. We're at supplies. I don't see a problem with that. I take care of all that on my own unless there's something Sean needs. I don't think he's really using any of that as we improve. The one, um, I, I'll come back to communication, but I'll jump over that. Meetings and trainings, a lot of that. I, I'm part of the Vermont Constables Association. And the Ruffin County Law Association. It's like twenty dollars. Like I, I pay that out of pocket. It's just as easy as sitting in a PO and all that, all that kind of comes out pay and. Uh, travel mileage. As you can see, in years past, we've used more of it. But again, I try to submit mine out. I haven't been out doing as many. We were doing more in-person trainings. So then once a month, Ruffin County Law Association will meet usually in Pittsburgh. Having a, a class that's open to anybody in law enforcement to get our, you know, we still have the same requirements as certified police officers. We're both, Sean's a two-easily. We're two, uh, level two, level two. We're level two officers, but mostly everything except for major investigations. Uh, part-time certification. But you still have to have that same requirement to keep your rural thirteen up. Where a lot of times there was time, there was some, some mileage and time into that. Where that comes in back in play. Well, with COVID, things shut down. We had to do more of every mole, trying to catch where we can. You know, did some with Castle, did some with Fairhaven, some of it. Like some of our like EMT stuff. Sean has some other stuff from his fire background. He keeps up. We can kind of jam that into the, what the academy accepts for stuff. So we try to do that. That may affect that a little bit on that with the mileage. So it may, maybe split the difference there, whatever, and come, you know, back up to. You know, maybe knocking down a hundred and fifty, see what we come back at and see as an average where we've been. I mean, that, I don't think it would be an out, outlandish response, but, uh, where we work on that. So machinery, equipment, a lot of times, a lot of our equipment is older. A lot of it we've kept, lights and stuff like that. A lot of it we've had the same stuff we use over and over in the cycle. We're not using it as much and as aggressive as, say, the PD that's on regular on the road all day. But there is things that do need to be replaced. Going into that topic and kind of skirting around communications, I wanted to bring that up here to see how the best way to handle this. So, and Bill might be able to shed a little light on this, kind of following the same line with the. State police are gonna be going to a new version of the radio. It's ultra-high band. Have they really set the date on that yet? It's still, you hear one minute it's coming, one minute it isn't. I did talk with Sean. We looked at some of the radios, like my radio's probably the ten. Maybe fifteen years old. I just wired it in myself in my truck and stuff like that. I helped Sean with his. I did get some quotes because at some point it's the state police goes to that, our radios will not work on the current system. I don't know if it behooves us to maybe put some line items in there to replace those, you know, affordable. And a mobile one per year. So it covers one console, then the next one can do the next year, whatever we deemed it to make, make it necessary. For some reason, if down the road, say, you know, Sean and I got done, you had a console that wasn't actively working, because you still need to be certified to be able to call on the radio and all that. That stuff could be carried over. It wouldn't be like it just died. It could be, you know, carried over the police department or someone could have helped them at all. A mobile's around nine hundred dollars and affordable's around eight hundred dollars. So at this point, we're talking about seventeen hundred dollars, which is a big investment. But if you kind of look over the years. We haven't really put much of anything into that. Now for us, we don't have cars. We don't have all that stuff. We take care of that on our own. I don't know, for us, it's a big budget item, but in the overall sense, how you guys are handling, cause I know you're changing some of how you're doing that stuff now with capital replacement. For us, it's capital replacement, but I don't think it really follows the definition, what you would call like a car's capital replacement. So that would be the only place I would like to see us maybe do something there. Now whether we just put it under communications for that one year. Then we bring it back down after we get the two years of getting those updated and they're only gonna go up unfortunately. So, I mean, we look at seventeen hundred here. There probably be enough other room in the budget to cover if it's another fifty or a hundred dollars more. The next round may be more than that because we're all seeing increases and everything, whether we talk budgets or salaries and stuff, but. That was a big thing I wanted to bring to. I did check into a little bit on grants. Uh, Bill was fortunate enough to get a grant to get a lot of his updated. I talked with some other constables that are maybe more full-time based in the sense that they don't have a PD, so they're the actual patrol officers for their town. Lot of resistance, not having a lot of luck getting the grant written because of the constitution department for that item. I get it, understand. We had at times, sometimes Bill has one, we can jump in, we jump some best grants and stuff like that. We try to work very well together. It's kind of two departments, but a lot of times there's a lot of some leap, but there's no sense in doubling up on the same thing. That would be the one thing, I guess, maybe do something with that. Questions or anything I can answer or concerns or?
What I heard you saying though is that, uh, the, the, it looked like two real major areas, the. Concern about the nineteen hundred in salary, that that needs to be two thousand, three hundred would be more accurate.
I think that, I think if we want to maybe bring it back a little bit, because you, you gotta look at the former history, it's not gonna, uh, uh, put in. I mean, under old statutes, I mean, any fees and services that are applied as constable, the town's required to pay, but I mean. If Sean started putting it all in time, it would outweigh what our budget is. And if he's happy with it, that's fine. But I know mine's at fifteen hundred. I think if he puts some more time in, maybe we cut it back a little bit, maybe split that. See how we go. I mean, you gotta find that balance that makes sense. You can't ask for money that you're not using because it doesn't make sense. That's where we had problems years ago with other. You know, about ten years ago, Rod and some of the other ones, you know, where I call fat of the budget that we finally got rid, you know, that we're trying to keep things tight for everybody. Cause I pay taxes, it's gonna sound just like everybody else, so.
I look at it as it's four hundred dollars and. And what they do. The, the other one, I don't know what the rest of you, that, that seventeen, if you're gonna replace the, uh, under the communications one. You're gonna put the, the, the mobile radio on the other one and, and you know, it's one thousand seven hundred and probably, uh, uh, that's. And that's one year, probably two years in a row, if you've got two vehicles that add, that has to be done. I don't, I don't know what your, what your thoughts are.
Yeah, I didn't know where to really place it in there because the way we're, we've kind of changed our stuff, but it's something we have to do. Cause I'll be very clear. If I don't have radio and I don't have communication in Vermont State Police, I'm gone. I will not be doing callouts. I will not go out. It's unsafe and my wife would shoot me. So.
And you need your radio.
It just, you know, there, there's times when somebody needs help or whatever and it's just, it's just a necessity. I mean, you know, we do think pretty inexpensively for what we provide. I mean, we're not providing the level that Bill and his, uh, force is doing full-time, but sometimes we take a little pressure off them at the same time and help with other things, you know.
Is there better timeline announced or not?
It's all in here.
If you talk to two A, they say, yep, okay, we're gonna put the switch, the same thing I've been worried about for five years.
Right.
And finally we got the grant and got that up. So I don't have that pressure on me anymore. So. But every day it's, they tell two A, yep, we're gonna do it. And they ask, okay, we need this. Yeah, we'll get back to you. So it could be today, it could be another five years. I mean, nobody knows what they're doing. Washington County is not going. They're gonna stay analog.
But you said the equipment that you have now is fifteen years old?
Yes, that's probably accurate. Ten to fifteen years old. It's.
I don't think that's a big leap to increase for them both to get it at the same time.
No, I'd agree. And the new radio would work on.
It would carry her now to later. So Castle and PD did that while it goes. They're the same thing. Once you update to this, it has the ability to do the current analog, then it goes to the ultra-high frequency to cover it.
It's a push of a button in the radio.
Yeah, yeah. And we work a lot around that two A, just like, uh, Bill's group does. They treat us really, really well and their, their pricing seems to be as good or better than anybody. We have very good tech support, so.
I mean, is that something I know, Rod, when you were on the board at one point suggested doing that out of emergency fund? Is that something instead of putting it in the budget, spend seventeen hundred out of that and then they're off, it's done?
Well, there, the, the gist of the conversation was, don't fund it. Okay, and if it happens, then you take it out of the emergency funds. But to just take it out of the emergency funds, uh, to, uh, to avoid. You know, increasing the budget because you, you wanna do it, uh, that's.
I'm just thinking hypothetically.
Yeah.
And I'm okay with that. If you, as a board, kind of go on the, the record per se to say, if we run into this, we will talk about it and probably go forward with that. Based on it's a safety issue. I'm okay with that because what I have now is working fine. It just, if, you know, at least we should look at one, probably Sean probably needs updating more faster than mine. Mine's a trunk unit that. It's got age on it, but I, you know, I'm the only one that deals with it. I'm the only one that handles it. I'm the only one that installs it. So it's not like ten people are using it or misusing it, you know, so. We can work with that, but again, are we, should we look to the future? I guess I'm looking for input, whatever you guys think. I mean, it, it comes down to where it needs to be taken care of, but it's the end of the day, if we can't talk to anybody, nobody's working. And I think we're at the moment referencing the, what I've got and what Bill's found, we, you know, all have different things. When it comes to the constables, at, at this point, when the state police has not seen like they're gonna try to whack us any separate charge for using their services. Cause when I work, I don't generate cases because I don't have access to the same computer system. Because you have to have that other whole network that Bill and them have. So we have access, but it's more just through the radio.
So it sounds like at minimum you could replace one radio anyways because of. And then if it's mandated by the state, I mean, there is other funding.
You know, it's, it's gonna be now, you know, the, the biggest thing is when we're gonna get into a point. We all hope COVID's gonna hit a point. Of course, my full-time job is steel and fire supply. I'm seeing, you know, we all see equipment and all this other stuff. We ordered radios through fire company in April. We just barely saw it now.
That was my next question.
I get afraid of if we don't look ahead where we add, if something kind of goes down. I mean, because it is what it is, you know.
Yeah, but you can't afford to wait months for something like that. So I don't know. For that amount of money, I'd say at least go ahead and. Or, order them. Who even knows if they'll get here in this year's budget, but.
Well, we're talking about, they couldn't be ordered until.
No, I know.
Next, next summer.
Right, it's, it's a long one.
Did you order out of this budget and then obviously with understanding that you went over, overspent, but you needed to? I mean, I know that's not ideal either, but then you're not, you're not looking at next year's budget. But get them up online now.
And there's probably some, if we sit down and work with Bill, come, I can maybe get the details as far as. What revenues have been generated over what we've done based on, you know, you shouldn't be using ticket, you know, I mean, we're not, we're out to make money or anything like that. But it's just, I think you'll find the revenue outweighs the costs at this point, unless I'm wrong. That would be my only, in other words, I'm pretty good with a lot of that stuff. I mean, it's very, you know, minimal piece of the whole pie you guys have to deal with, obviously.
So communications, we bump up to seventeen hundred?
Was it seventeen hundred for two radios?
I know.
But that's a mobile and a portable. You have to, you should do both at the same time.
Do both for one.
Or, I mean, if you're gonna do it, it probably makes the most sense to just do two new ones, be done, like my, our fourables are in the same thing. They're ten, fifteen years old. You know, it just makes the most sense. If you're gonna update a constable or an officer, update them with everything, they're set. You know, then if we got to really pickle.
Done at the same time.
You take in, okay, here's a portable. You can get by with a portable. If you had to, it's ugly around here. You don't get, get out as far. But I mean, if we had to wait a, a month or something for something, we could get something by, but, I mean.
For now, is that where you're getting?
Seventeen hundred, yeah.
Would it be equipment and machinery or communications?
We're, we're talking communications and cons and cons is probably.
Whichever, it kind of fall either way because it's technically a piece of equipment, but it's also communications, whatever makes the most sense for you guys. That it would be probably more defined to your public being communications. If somebody asks, you could be more specific to it.
So seventeen one fifty is that new line? Seventeen one fifty?
About eighteen fifty.
No, eighteen fifty. No, eighty.
Where are you at?
Eighteen.
One thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Seventeen.
That was my.
That's what I thought. I thought, I thought it was seventeen thousand dollars.
You didn't hear that conversation, did you?
I was, we're, well, we've got six hundred dollars sitting there.
Well, I, I bumped it to seventeen, so.
We were thinking if you, if you took.
You buy bills as well.
Seventeen minus that six hundred is already in there. If you're gonna have six hundred. Then you're only increasing by eleven hundred instead of seventeen. Use the, use the money you already have in the budget, budgeted or proposed for next.
So you're looking at machinery and equipment line item. We're looking at communications.
Communications had two hundred, I think, budgeted that was in there, right?
Cause, yeah, I heard one. Radios can be considered equipment.
Right.
Okay.
Car and person.
So if you took, you know, I don't, well, it depends, it was already been spent and all that, because that's probably been changed a little bit.
So for purposes of next year.
Yeah.
I think for now, we just put seventeen hundred.
Yep.
I was gonna put seventeen.
And, and with, with what's in there now, if it's only seventeen, seventeen hundred, I think we can squeeze out a couple bucks to get a, a new radio for that dire situation.
Alright, anything else?
I'm good if you guys could. So this one for my process, we're gonna go from here and you're gonna let Joe know if we get to a final or if there's anything like that. So we'll find where you.
We'll go through all of them and then see what the bottom line is and see if we have to adjust.
You guys have always been good to deal with, so we have a big deal.
Uh, Donnie is a man where the only thing different we can't do now is it used to be the way they've changed the reporting system on the revenue. They used to say like, okay, it was, uh, Ruffin County Sheriff, the Fairham Constable, Fairham PD, State Police. And it would break out who wrote what tickets. Now it just comes in with a ticket number.
That's, yeah, that's.
So it's just a ticket number. This is the total. So it takes some work to go each month. Okay, yep, Sean wrote that ticket. Don wrote that ticket.
Right.
To, to break out the revenue side for each, each of the departments. They don't do that anymore. Just one big lump to get.
Right, and that's why it's just hard because he, Sean does work for Billy as well. So I mean, it's hard, you know, we both, you know, he's done more of that than I have.
Sean historically doesn't intend not to get paid. He just thinks I'll do that time sheet and then it's gone.
Doesn't happen.
Exactly. We, we talked about that. You know, it's like, you know, we can't go to them with that because you guys, you know, we, we justify everything we do, I think, very adequately. It just, it's hard to go to bat if you can't prove we need it.
Alright, well, appreciate it.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Uh, streetlights. Joe, I assume this would be you?
Yeah, this is Bill. Uh, we did see a reduction in streetlights. Um, I know we are anticipating doing, oh, no, no, I'm sorry, this is. Yeah, streetlights. Um, we did see a reduction in streetlights, uh, just because we weren't using the, that total amount under the utility streetlights. Um, I did add a little bit for the park just because that, uh. The bathroom down there. Uh, is seeing more use at the utilities, but, um, other than that, no, it's, it's pretty lean. We. I don't think that our, I don't think that the lights in the park are gonna come online soon enough to budget for. So I didn't wanna, I don't like to throw money into a budget thinking, well, maybe I'll use it. So i- if it's, if we're a little short, then we're a little short, but it won't be significant.
Questions on streetlights? Okay, um, cemetery?
So you'll see the cemetery expense, uh, the salary has gone down. That number will, uh, bounce back to our, to our salary cheat sheets, um, where again, salaries are apportioned. Uh, based on the, the rolling out of average and use. So that's why you see that, uh, number is reduced there. That number has, you'll see increases elsewhere and that's, that's, this money came from here to other places.
Questions on cemetery? Airpark?
We did increase airpark a little bit. Um, that, those expenses are strictly based on the dog park. What we anticipate using, um, next year for maintenance. The, the other purchase services line, if that, if that sticks out because it's not identified, that would be for repairs and, uh, uh, certain things for the bathroom. Sometimes.
That was my, my question on that. Uh, you answered the dog park one. And my, my question was more, do we have enough money in here because of the dog park being open? And you're gonna be using the bathrooms in the pavilion, which makes you ask the question. Are we gonna start using, are, are, do we want, are, do we wanna start, uh. Trying to put some traction into using the pavilion, which probably means there's some money and some work. You know, that kitchen that's sitting there and everything else there. There's, uh, we, we don't have funding for that pavilion to be fully.
Maintaining up to.
Probably operation. We're not gonna do anything different with it in the next budget year. Your explanation is good, but I'm, I'm just wondering.
Ben evaluated though.
Right, how do you even know what to throw at?
I don't, because I, it's been so long since any of the, the kitchen has, has been used. Well, what's the real expense? But one thing for sure, the bathrooms that are up there are probably gonna get quite a bit more use.
The dogs are gonna be out parked.
The people along the dogs.
Not for the dogs, okay.
But i- if you're, if you're comfortable that you've got it, that, then it's just the two questions I had.
It is, uh, for right now, we'll see what happens next year, obviously. If there's more use then maybe something.
We may.
Yeah, that, that, that's our best guess. We've never installed a dog park before, so.
Alright. And animal control?
And you'll see a little increase there. Uh, this is, this is Bill's department, but we have had a very active dog officer. Um, and that's representing that. Bill, do you have any input on?
No, again, just, just in July, I think we used seven, July and first part of August and. A lot of it came to a house on Main Street, a house on Scottsdale. We're still, still dealing with it. One party moved up here. It's not, but, um. I think it was seven hundred ninety dollars, but I looked at the, I looked at the thing and I said, I'm like, well, we're already maxed on the budget and we're two months in. And then I looked and the money's still there. So obviously going back to what I said, we need to figure that line out. And then I looked and the money's still there. So obviously, going back to what I said, we need to figure that line item out. If you have an active and responsive person, the calls go up. And I'm not, I'm not allowing him to make work. It's self, it's not self-generated, it's calls. He got chicken regular the other day, because somebody called about tickets. Um, so they got rehomed, but. So that was the purpose of an increase. Obviously, it's not a lot, but it's something. Um, in in the past, it was fifteen hundred dollars. And then like seventeen and eighteen, the option that we had, had shoulder surgery and was out, so we were covered out of our salaries, we were doing a job, so. Then the new guy stepped in and done those jobs, so that's justification for the, for the increase.
All right, questions on that? So we'll continue right, Joe, at the next.
Heading forward. Can I ask for clarification under constables? Did, for that total line item, did it, did we want one thousand seven fifty or did we want? An additional one thousand seven hundred added?
I think it was the second one.
The sec, we wanted the, we wanted the radio added to the existing dog. I just wanted to make sure I get, get the right answer there. Thank you.
Well, we talked about it, it going into the machinery and equipment rather than the communications.
Yeah, but the dollar amount was.
Yeah, the dollar, yes, yes, but it's just a matter of.
Whatever you guys, wherever.
If they're comfortable with it, communications, just so you know, what it might be.
Parking lot items, any items for parking lot?
No, but we're, we're slowly chipping away at things. The list used to be bigger.
Just. I'm, I'm, I know we've got a lot, just wanted, at the E D C meeting Monday night, we we talked about uh. A declaration of inclusion statement and uh and how it pertains to helping uh with economic development. Because it, uh towns that that have one of those usually can attract businesses, workforces better. Uh, and and the only reason under parking lot I want to bring that up is we're wondering if the board is interesting in adding that item. Uh, as is a parking lot item. Uh, what that does, we we finished as an E D C working on tax stabilization. We we were going to do some research over the next month, there's still gonna come back with with something. I don't know if you wanted to add anything like your, the the phone call you got, uh, the timing is everything.
Yeah, it was, Glenn, Glenn and I had actually talked about this, I will say Monday last week. And then the very next morning, a young lady came in and said, what are you doing for diversity inclusion? I was like, I'm glad you asked, because we're working on that now. So um it's, it was very timely that we had the conversation and that.
This young lady, uh, resident or?
Uh, she, uh, she was sent my way by one of our select board members. I I don't know who the young lady, I don't know where she came from.
But yeah, we should have one.
Yeah, one hundred percent whether it was a resident.
And and one of the things I was looking to is get in the park, one of the things we saw is we have a great uh uh statement that was. Put in for um customer focus and and the staff. It's the values of the uh of the Fairhaven Town Staff document that's that you find in there. And I think an inclusion statement marries up nicely with that, uh, if you, if you do it. But more, just didn't know if if the board says nah, uh, now we got enough on our plate, then we won't start working. But it's a, it's one where we can.
And the E D C will work on.
That we'll, we'll, we'll work on it and and we'll be coming back with with some, we're just in the early phases. Looking at a bunch of pieces and a lot of resources out there.
The parking lot just reminded me of the thing that we always had on there about Citizen of the Year for Fairhaven that's, we're not gonna do. But I did notice um in the Lake Region's press that Poltony didn't choose a person this year. I can't remember who they, they.
They gave it to fishing game.
Oh, yeah, which just made, maybe that's appropriate, but it just made me think, small towns, maybe after ten, fifteen years. You kind of start to run out of Citizens of the Year.
Small town.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, you know, just saying.
We can do that though, it's not like we can't. We we just need to.
Well, we need to find some interest in it.
Yeah, we gotta find it. Yeah, it's hard.
Okay, um, board roundtable? Ready for roundtable? Jeff, are you still there?
I'm still here, I've I've had nothing for roundtable.
Okay, uh, finance reports, Jeff, do you have those?
I do.
All right, do you want to go ahead with that?
Yeah, this one, there's, there's two payroll and two general funds, because there's some corrections.
Okay.
So, uh, motion for the ten twenty-six payroll warrant, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents. That's corrections for the previous warrant.
Okay.
Second.
Uh, motion by Jeff, seconded by Glenn. Uh, any discussion on that one? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What carries?
So then the eleven four payroll warrant, uh, thirty-three thousand, thirty-nine dollars and thirty cents.
Second it.
Uh, motion by Jeff, seconded by Glenn for the payroll warrant of eleven four. Um, any questions on that one? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, then the general fund warrant, uh, eleven oh four, um, for a hundred, one hundred, three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-two cents.
Second it.
Okay, motion by Jeff, seconded by Glenn for the eleven four general fund warrant. Questions on that one? Okay, all in favor of that one? Motion carries?
And then the, sorry, then the corrected ten twenty-six general fund warrant, uh, one hundred twenty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Second it.
Okay, motion by Jeff, seconded by Glenn for the adjusted ten twenty-six general fund warrant. Uh, questions on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, motion carries, um, checkbook status?
Checkbook's back in the black, three hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighteen cents.
Okay, questions on that? Um, we did add an executive session for real estate. Is there a motion for that?
Motion, we move into executive session, including the uh town manager for real estate, uh, one V S A three thirteen A two.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Rod. Uh, discussion on that motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.